Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. We appreciate having all of you here today. So, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, President. Trustee Iasi.
President.
Trustee Gutierrez.
She'll be late.
Trustee McLaurie.
Present.
Trustee Mayor.
Here.
Trustee Rosenberg.
Here.
President Clark.
Here.
Our student representative, Maddie, is not here, and I am here.
Great, thank you. Trustee Rosenberg, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, public comment. Do we have any public comments? We have yellow cards sitting out at the table right outside the door that you can fill out for public comment at any time. We love hearing from the public, so if you decide that you want to provide some input, just let us know. We appreciate it. Okay, board reports.
Need to adopt.
Need to adopt the agenda.
Still moved.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Board reports. Trustee Mayor, can we start with you?
Sure. And by the way, it's not because I don't like you people, but at quarter to six, I'm going to get up and leave because HUG High School is having their ROTC awards tonight, and I want to see how many awards the twins get. Howard.
Yes.
I had quite a busy two weeks. The schools that I visited were Peavine, Huntsburger, Sepulveda, Galena, and Silver Lake. And then I've attended four ROTC awards, North Valley, McQueen, Spanish Springs, and Sparks. And I went to a homeowners' association meeting, and they had a lot of questions, but as I said in the board policy, they're really happy with the presentations that are being made on Common Core. But the one problem that they're having with it is it's too short of a time. And I asked, and it was question and answer, no prepared speech or anything. So they're going to try to follow up on some of those service organizations explaining the Common Core, because a lot of these people at this homeowners' association are really concerned about it, and a lot of their questions, they went to Rotary and Lions and stuff. And a lot of their questions were answered during those presentations, so I think that's a great thing for the curriculum department to do. Thank you.
Trustee Rogero.
Well, not that I want to give Trustee Mayor any attention, but he has quite a reputation at Galena High School. He was quite a hit during his visit there the other day. I actually heard from several staff members how he does not need to be escorted by the principal throughout the building. He escorts himself and interacts and moves in and out of the classrooms and has a great time, so we might have to monitor him.
Come along.
Put an ankle bracelet on so we can see where he is at all.
Yes, yes, yes. That's correct, so I...
Into the budget we might want to...
Exactly. So, it's been a busy two weeks. Lots of different meetings, but just a couple of things that I want to highlight. I had the opportunity to do a Listen to Learn with the 360 Blueprint program, which Trustee Iasi also attended with staff, so I don't want to talk about...I'll let you talk a little bit about it. But it's another great partnership with the faith-based community and local law enforcement. They're doing great work, and so I think these are the programs that are really going to give us the great support that we need to make some of these changes that we're aiming for with the district, that high graduation rate. It's these support programs that will really help us achieve that. So, so grateful for the work that they're doing. I'm very proud. And actually, I met with two parents this week, very interesting, and have had lots of conversations with Deputy Davis on that. She's been very receptive and helpful with that. And then last night, as a follow-up to Trustee McLaurie and I's parent meeting with Galena High School, I've been working with...staff and I've been working with Assemblyman Kerner on the egress and ingress of Galena High School. They had some concerns, and so he actually went to the state. They did a study, and we weren't able to actually make any major changes, but we are going to make some changes with striping and things like that. Staff has been working on that with us, so really good. And the principal has been amazing to work with, and the suggestion came from a parent, and really she helped advocate to move this process forward, so it really turned out very well, so yeah.
I forgot something, and I see two of the other guests. Sparks High Hall of Fame was last Monday, and I have to say it was a wonderful event, not just because my cousin was inducted into the Hall of Fame, but Sparks High did a tremendous job with it, and they are to be congratulated. Kevin's here, and they just did a wonderful job in the Hall of Fame program.
Great, thank you. Trustee Rosenberg?
Oh, my. The JROTC accreditation meetings at Sparks, Galena, HUG, and Reno. On Saturday, I went to speak to the ACCT Film Festival, which was really quite something. These kids have really got it on the paw. It is absolutely frightening how quick they are. I thought I knew things, forget it. I don't think I've ever felt older in my life. Burn out of any of you. Then the 360 Blueprint Dinner last night. I missed the Listen to Learn. I had it in my head...you're gonna love this...that this was a blueprint firm that made blueprints and that our kids interned in. I had no idea. And I went up and down El Rancho Drive probably about six times looking for 2200, and I'm looking for a blueprint place with a sign in front of it. I don't want to be religious, so let's just do it spiritually. I was drawn into the parking lot of the Nazarene Church, and I asked the lady, "Where's 2200?" She said, "Right here." I said, "But it's a church." She said, "I know." It was a wonderful, wonderful program. They're taking the youngest ones in the community, and they are teaching them how good they are, how much they have to look forward to. Reading is absolutely essential, and it's going to change the entire culture of that whole community before they're finished. It was absolutely marvelous. Plus, they fed us. And they brought plates of spaghetti smothered in meat sauce. I am not joking. We are talking smothered. You couldn't see the spaghetti. And I said, "Spaghetti? I'm getting it all over myself." Deputy Superintendent Davis said, "It's not for you, it's for the kids." Okay. It was a wonderful, wonderful program. I was also online for the Nevada Association of School Boards, and it was an interesting meeting, let's say. There's a bunch of stuff that came forward, mainline kids versus the weighted kids that are in special education. I wonder how many people know in our community that to educate one profoundly disabled child costs over $10,000 a year. That's where the money goes. We're not throwing it away. It's actually going on something good. They talked about the new executive director search and Nevada Redd...no, I'm saying that wrong. Excuse me. Nevada Ready. Common Core standards are explained at great length. All you need to do is go online. If you have any questions at all, they'll take care of it without any problem at all. It was an interesting week. When you go to a bunch of things that show you how little you know, it's really a call to action.
Thank you. Trustee Iasi.
I know it's hard to pronounce Nevada when you're from Massachusetts.
Yeah. That'll be enough out of you.
I did go to the Listen to Learn, the Blueprint 360, and I was very happy with what they're doing there, very surprised. And Trustee Rogero asked, "How can the school district help?" And frankly, they didn't tell very much overtly, but I got under the scene that there is some stuff that we can do there, and I hope we can, a lot with...not with children so much, but reaching out to their families to tell them what's going on. So, and we brought that back, and I think that's going to get some help for them. I believe that will be a very good program, and they want to bring that to more schools than the ones that they have now, but it really relies on what's around that school, because they really want to bring in the neighborhood to teach the schools, not bring people in there from around that neighborhood. I also went to the district's open checkbook presentation, saw that, very impressed with what's going to roll out, very happy that that's going to be coming on pretty soon. I think that they did a marvelous job in a short amount of time. I told them they did it in about a third of the time that the city of Reno took to roll that out, and I'm very, very pleased with what I saw, and I can't wait until that rolls out to the public. That was what I have done.
Great, thank you. Trustee McLaurie.
Yes, I attended the United Federal Credit Union's open house in their new building up in northwest Reno at Charlin's and Mayan, and Rob actually right there as you come off the freeway. And of course, I really believe that we are so fortunate to have them as our partners. They do the Excellence in Education, the Class Act, they provide funding for professional development for our administrators. They do all kinds of things in the community that I'm not certain that the community is fully aware of, so it was a great pleasure to represent the school district in that whole scenario. And they had over 150 people there, so it was very, very well attended. It was fun. Then I also attended the McQueen High School Arts Night. They have a dessert night, and they have a program that begins at 6:00 with the choir, the band, the jazz band, the jazz choir, the art students. The art students' works are all across the entire foyer within the John Flynn Auditorium. And so it's very interesting to me, because I'm a big music and drama person, drama people also presented, and I just love to see our kids, once again, we were talking a little earlier about kids being engaged and motivated, and whatever we can do in our high schools, as well as what we're doing with our signature academies, our gifted and talented programs, everything that we're doing to keep kids engaged, motivated, and participating in their schools so that they will graduate. And that's certainly a grand example of how a school comes together to make certain that all kids are involved, including the JROTC up there as well. Then I also visited Verdi School briefly, had a nice conversation with the principal out there, and always can look around, and that's such a pleasant area and a beautiful setting for that little tiny school, and they've always got wonderful things going out there, including that autistic program that's really a stellar program there as well. So that's how I kept myself busy this last week.
Great. Well, I went to the Microsoft event where they were having a...they had brought in different groups of high school students, AACT, the IT at Sparks High and Spanish Springs High School, the Reno High Red Brick Program, Red House, Red House Program. Ms. McNeil was there as well. It was very interesting. They had the U.S. manager of Xbox Live speak to the students, so they were excited about that. I was excited about that, too. That's kind of neat. And then they had the connect, and you could...we connected to his brother, who is also in Microsoft, and talked a little bit about their paths to get there, that you don't necessarily have to take the path of, you know, being an engineer or a scientist or computer science. You could take other paths to get there as well, so if you have the passion, you can always give that a go. So it was very interesting. Enjoyed that. And I think that's it. Superintendent Martinez.
And I'll keep it short just for time.
Let me just say, think about the partnerships again to kind of piggyback on what some of the others have said about partnerships with a company that uses what they have and to take it out to our high school students and show them avenues for careers that they might possibly take. And also, they provide software and other items, so it was a great partnership, and want to indicate that we certainly appreciate that.
Absolutely. I was...been visiting schools and, you know, just, you know, they're closing out the year, so it's always an interesting time, because they're finishing the year and they're planning for next year. Had a very great experience at Diedrickson, so I got to share with you. So I was with some kindergartners, and Diedrickson is piloting some new materials that are very rigorous, and they've been doing it all year, and the kindergartners were quizzing me about colonial times and literally sharing things with me that I had...I didn't know. For example, you know, how many presidents existed before George Washington? And I thought it was a trick question, but believe it or not, you know, colonial times, there were presidents before George Washington. So the children were quizzing me on things like that, and again, keep in mind, these are kindergartners.
Kindergarten.
And then I was at...also went to Maxwell Elementary School with...talking to first graders when we're talking about college, and you'd be surprised how much they know about college. And remember, Maxwell's our National Title I School of the Year, and it's very obvious why their, you know, their rate is so highly, but these were first graders, and we're talking about college and what it takes to go to college. And with that was at the Nugget Scholarship Event yesterday, so we had...there was 24 students that were given scholarships, and this is huge, because the Nugget's been doing this for 58 years. So the Squaga family was there. Mr. Squaga was very emotional, talking about the fact that they've been doing it for 58 years, they're going to continue to do it. It's a scholarship that children get every single year, four years. They check on them in terms of their GPAs. The majority of the 24 recipients were from Washoe County, pretty much representing all of our high schools, everybody attending either UNR or another tier-one university, and just, like I said, very emotional, just because the families were there, and the Squagas are just have been such generous donors. So I just wanted to publicly thank them, because again, they continue to invest in our community and in our children.
Great. Trustee Rosenberg.
One other thing. When you go and visit a lot of these places, our schools or our partners, it's a wonderful feeling to see all the good things, but every now and again, you learn something that you never recognized, as I did last night. There was simultaneous...no, it wasn't simultaneous. It was a translator for half of the population that simply did not speak English. I've never really thought about not being bilingual. I took Spanish back in the year three, but I think I'm going to start taking it again, because this was really something. The lady that did the translation, I've forgotten her name, but she was absolutely wonderful, because in this translation, you can't just translate word for word, you've got to interpret. And in the interpretation, sometimes things get lost. Well, Nathan Dupree was the speaker. He is funny. She captured it. I mean, it was really something special. So I would like to say thank you to 360 Blueprint, not only for educating me about what they are, but showing me a little bit about life.
Oh, nice. Before we move on to our recognitions, I wanted to acknowledge any of the school board candidates we have in the audience. I see at least one.
I see one.
You want to stand up and say your name and what district you're running for?
I'm from safety and I run for...which is from east side of Washoe County, from Guyer Grade to Reno.
Thank you, unwelcome.
Oh, here we are.
Okay, our recognitions, favorite portion of our agenda, and first up is Academic Olympics. Ms. Riggs, welcome.
Good afternoon, President Clark, Superintendent Martinez, and board members. I'm excited to present a little bit, I guess, to myself, because we have some missing people here, so I apologize, but...
Would you like to hold off until we do the others and come back to you?
Well, I would just like to recognize that we did have our competition. I want to share with you who won, and then I'd like to just thank people that donated the scholarships to those participants and winners, if that's possible. Is that okay? Because that's really what we're here for, and that's who we want to recognize. And I also want to let you know that we're holding off on...everyone wanted a healthy competition between the winners and the board of trustees, and I put that off as well, so...
Good God.
I want you to know that we're on our many, many years into the Academic Olympic program. It is something that Gifted and Talented Education Program supports every year, and we bring together very dedicated high school teachers to oversee the competitions, and it is a curriculum-based competition with some great winners. So this year, our fourth runner-up team was from McQueen. Third place was from Worcester High School. Second place was from Minogue, and then Reno took first place. So, congratulations, yes. Yes. And what was very special about this year's event was that every year, we look for donations for the scholarships that go to the team winners, and actually, the runner-ups as well. And this year, we had actually, our GT Elementary Program had done a business and had gone out and sold to parents and families as they were learning some token economy and business applications, and all of those were donated by their choice. They said, "We would like this to go to gifted and talented students to support their college," and that's exactly what we did. So we internally donated that, thanks to Carol Paragary's groups, and I want to thank them for that.
Great, thank you.
Yep, that's it. Very good. Thank you.
Really appreciate that update. And congratulations to all the winners and for getting scholarships, too. That's great. Okay, Ms. Huckabee, Exceptional Substitute.
No.
Okay, Ms. Van Truss. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, President Clark, board members, Superintendent Martinez. It is a great pleasure for me to be able to present Michelle Kramer as the Exceptional Substitute Teacher of the Year. Michelle started with Van Gorder as a paraprofessional in working in our Strategies Program, which is a program designed for mostly students with autism. Michelle was...did such a great job that she decided to go back to college and focus in psychology. And during that time, she decided, "Well, I'm going to go ahead and sub." As it happened, my Strategies teacher was on medical leave for the first semester, fall semester, so I convinced Michelle to come back as the sub-teacher. It was fantastic. I could not have asked for a more perfect way to start the school year, and as you know, those can be some of the most challenging classes in our school district. The kids were great. They loved it. The teachers were fantastic. She met with every single general ed teacher, made sure the transition was well. She set up every single individualized schedule for every single child. She met with the parents. She gave all the feedback on the IEPs, and it was the best transition possible. It was so wonderful that now one of my colleagues has stolen her, and she is now subbing at another school on a long-term sub position. So I've lost her, but I am still very honored to be able to present to you the Exceptional Substitute Teacher Award, so thank you.
Well, Ms. Kramer, first off, do you have anybody in the audience you'd like to introduce?
My daughter is here, Raven Kramer. She is with the Gate Program, so that's kind of fun that she was here for that. And my mom, Rose Barnes, is here with them.
Oh, well, welcome. So which school are you at now?
Drake Elementary School.
Oh. So how is school going?
Great.
So you work full-time and go to school still?
Yes, I do.
And how long do you have to go?
I still have 18 months.
And she has changed her major to teaching.
Oh, from school... Well, wonderful.
I'm a Shanghaier, definitely.
Well, certainly, we appreciate everything that you've done, obviously, as a substitute teacher. You have gone in fully engaged in every child, and we appreciate that and want you to recognize as well that we only give out 12 of these each year, so out of all of the people that can possibly get it, you know...
And there's thousands of substitutes, thousands, literally.
Thank you.
That was the number I was searching for. Thank you.
Literally. I do even think you had...it's thousands.
How many is that exactly?
A lot.
Yes. And substitutes are so important, because, you know, our regular teachers, for issues, have to be absent from the class, and we don't want that time not to be academically fruitful and you'll have the productivity still there, so...and it's such a hard job to go in someplace where somebody else has been and pick up the lesson plans and engage the students and not allow them to get away with anything and be able to classroom management, so congratulations. And we have Superintendent Martinez, did you want to say anything?
Just, I got to tell you, Jen is one of, of course, you know, we have many amazing principals, but Jen is one of the unique ones that has a special ed endorsement. So to be recognized not only as a substitute, but also for a special ed class, I think it's very, you know, just the fact with Jen's background, I think it makes it that much more special, so...
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, we have a plaque for you, Michelle Kramer. Outstanding Washoe High School District Substitute Teacher, 2013 to 2014, presented by the Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up and be in the picture?
Thank you. Thank you.
Where's your doctor's?
She's at midnight.
At midnight?
In the library.
Okay. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Ms. Rivas, welcome.
Good evening, trustees, President Clark, Superintendent Martinez. So we are here to present to you the Asian American Pacific Islander Recognition Month. I'm going to now allow the nominators of this recognition to come up front and tell us more about the students that have nominated in the groups.
Great, welcome.
And this is Valerie Relon from Reno High School.
Thank you, Mrs. Rivas. Madam President, Superintendent, and members of the board, thank you. When I saw the email Mrs. Rivas sent regarding nominating individuals or a group in the school district that represents Asian Americans and Asian Pacific Islanders that have demonstrated leadership by initiating, implementing, and sponsoring programs that has had an impact at our school and community through working together, fostering and promoting respect, acceptance, and understanding of each other's traditions and cultures. As the co-advisor of the Asian American Club in Reno High School, immediately I filled out the nomination form, not just for the recognition, but for the awareness of our existence in our school district. Each year, we have outstanding students join our club with a 3.5 and above GPA. We've brought along our club members here today, and I would also like to introduce our JRTC instructor and the advisor of the club, Sergeant Major Ronald Rolon.
Great.
I'm also her bitter half for the last 44 years. This time, I'd like to introduce the president of our club.
Okay.
Very nice.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michael Huang. I am a sophomore at Reno High School, and I have been in the Asian Pacific Islanders Club for two years now, and both years I've been president, and I'm from a Chinese heritage, and now I would like my members of the club to introduce themselves.
Great.
Hello, my name is Jefferson Sanchez, and I am a sophomore at Reno High School with a Filipino heritage.
Hi, my name is Clifford Stewart, and I am a sophomore at Reno High School. Hi, my name is Clifford Stewart, and I am a sophomore at Reno High School, and I have a Filipino heritage.
Hi, my name is Lisa Lee, and I'm a freshman at Reno High School, and I have a Vietnamese heritage.
Hi, Vanessa Chong, I'm a freshman at Reno High School, and I have a Chinese and a Vietnamese heritage.
Hi, I'm Stefan, I'm senior of Reno High School, and I have a Filipino heritage.
Good afternoon. My name is David, I am a junior of Reno High School, and I have a Chinese heritage.
Hello, I'm Jericho, I'm from Reno High School, I'm a senior, and I'm Irish and German heritage.
Hello, my name is Katrina Del Rosario, I'm a freshman from Reno High School, and I have a Filipino heritage.
Hi, I'm Kent Morris, I'm a freshman at Reno High School, and I have a Filipino heritage.
Hello, I'm Paul Pravante, I'm a junior at Reno High School, and I have a Filipino and Italian heritage.
Hi, I'm Christina Del Rosario, and I'm a freshman at Reno High School, and I have a Filipino heritage.
So basically, our club has been running since 2001, and our main goal here is to share our ethnic group and culture with the whole entire district. And each month, we pick a country from Asia, and we go over it on, the first Tuesday of each month, we go over the demographics and the geographics, the second Tuesday, we go over music, the third Tuesday, we go over dance, and the fourth Tuesday, we go over potluck.
Oh, fourth Tuesday, that's yet to come.
So I am the vice president of the Asian Pacific Islanders Club, and my main role as the vice president is to be a substitute for the president when he is absent, and also to support all the remaining members of the Asian Pacific Islanders Club by supporting the trade, the supplies, and also the passing of ideas from each member also to send to the others when we are otherwise not in the club as of far.
Hello, I'm the Aloha Director, and my job is to recruit others to join Asian Pacific Islanders Club. And the school activities we've been doing in Reno High School is the Mini Knights of Nations, which we help out with decorations, talent shows, and fashion shows. And over the past 11 years, we've been doing it since with help, with the help of the Spanish Club, the International Club, and the French Club. And about the average people that comes is 400 to 500 people.
Hi, I'm the treasurer of our club, and what I do is I watch, look at the money and see how much money we can give out as scholarships to our seniors, and we also donated $568 to the Samoa Tsunami back in 2009.
Wow, great.
For the past, for the past 11 years, we have given away 25 scholarships to the seniors that's been in our club as a token. And for every year, we gave away two to three scholarships for the seniors.
35, did you say?
25.
25, wow.
Very impressive.
I am the Public Affairs Officer for the club, and in one of the years, we took all of our seniors out to the Bay Area to, to see the big campuses like UC Berkeley and San Francisco, to see what it's like to be in the big campus, also other places like Japan Town, Chinatown, and the Golden Gate Bridge. A lot of people had fun, they enjoyed it, and during the month of June or May, we have a dining in and also an awards night to identify and recognize the stuff that our members have done throughout the years.
And I am the Activities Director, and I'm the one that will help organize all the activities and dances. We do fundraisers in between each activity and fundraiser so that we can support the scholarships for our leaving seniors. And we have two seniors with us right now, and that is, and we're going to give them the scholarship this year.
Wow.
Okay, so, yeah, ladies and gentlemen, this is the Asian Pacific Islanders Club of Reno High School. Thank you for recognizing our club, and, yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Well, what a very productive club. You guys are busy.
And I think we have an administrator from Reno High School present this evening.
Kind of.
Kind of. Would you like to say something, and then we'll go over to, would you like to say something?
I don't know.
Okay. I also would like to introduce Jennifer Lau, she works for Upward Bound, she's the coordinator of the program, and she nominated two students that we'd like to highlight tonight as well.
Welcome.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here today. So I'm very excited to share the stories of two remarkable young men with you. Like Fatima said, my name is Jen Lau, I'm a counselor and program coordinator for the Upward Bound Programs, which works very closely with the Washoe County School District. So thank you for having us here tonight. I'm also the president of the Asian American and Pacific Islander Alumni Chapter at the University of Nevada Reno. If anyone read the silver and blue, I am pack attack. So I'm very excited to be here. Maybe if I could have Ton Chung come up here with me so I could introduce him first?
Absolutely.
Do you want to come up, too? Sure. So this is Ton Chung. Ton is a senior at Sparks High School. I've had the immense pleasure of getting to know Ton through his commitment to Upward Bound. He's been in Upward Bound Programs for the last four years, he joined as a freshman. So Ton has completed his high school journey, and he's now graduating with his honors diploma. Ton has always been a well-rounded and respectful young man, however, he has truly blossomed within the last year, so I'd like to share some of his things with you. He never ceases to amaze me with his academic commitment. He is not only fully committed to his education, but he truly shines as a leader and an impeccable leader at that. As a senior, Ton has been a great role model to his peers. His work ethic and drive sets the bar for our younger Upward Bound students in what they should strive for as a college-bound student. Ton is also a part of the High School Mesa at Sparks High School Math Engineering and Science Achievement Club. This past year, Sparks High School Mesa took first place at the Regional Science Olympiad. Ton and his partner were part of the Road Scholars Competition, so they took first place in Road Scholars. As long as I know, have known Ton, he's also been employed at one of our local casinos to assist his family with finances and save up for his college education. I don't know many high school students who are as disciplined as Ton to maintain such a demanding schedule with not only high school work, but also being involved in all sorts of clubs and organizations and having time to work in the evenings. So I think that that's huge, and he has done it maintaining a 3.75 GPA. Not only that, but Ton is always willing to help out in the community when he can. This past semester, he's mentored a young Agnes Rizley Elementary student by going to spend the day with them at school and bringing them with him to a day at school. So, and on top of that, he's great, on top of that, he also was one of our lead volunteers at the Best in the West Nugget Rib Cookoff. He helped our parent advisory committee of Upward Bound raise over $2,000 in scholarships for local high school students, so that was amazing. Not only does he have a well-planned academic and work schedule, but Ton remains involved in everything he does at school. He was the teacher's aide in the discipline office this year, and in speaking to administrators about him, everyone is very fond of him, not only for his charismatic and silly attitude, but his hard work ethic. So I think he's able to demonstrate to students, school can be fun, but we all still have to work very hard, so I think that is great. He's also a part of the golf team, the robotics club, and prom committee. Ton is not only just a hard-working student, but he's an all-around outstanding individual. I'm so happy to have this opportunity to recognize Ton, because I'm telling him so great all the time, how great he is all the time, but I'm glad to share that with other people. I know he will be very successful at the University of Nevada Reno in the fall, and one day, he will be one of the leading engineers in this world. I see a bright future for this young man.
So Ton, have you always been interested in math and science?
Yeah, I've, I've always liked science and like math, it's my thing, I guess. I don't know how to explain it, like...
Well, it sounds like you're very good at your thing. What is your major going to be?
I was thinking mechanical engineering and minoring in business communications.
That sounds great.
Wow, that is excellent.
That's amazing.
Yes, Trustee Ozzy.
I'm curious what you had to cut out of your schedule to come here today.
I guess not much.
You know, all I can think of is that commercial on television, "Tell me, did it hurt when you fell from heaven?"
Little bit.
Did you bring any family with you, Ton?
No, they're all working right now.
Well, obvious, yes, the work ethic comes to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Yes, very well.
Congratulations.
Okay, it's me again. I have one more student to introduce, so I would like to bring up Henry Ng. Okay, so everyone, this is Henry Ng. Henry is an above and beyond type of student. He currently holds a 4.73 GPA and has taken way more AP and honors classes than is required of him. He always impresses me with his drive, motivation, and perseverance. Henry comes from a unique first-generation family situation. He not only manages to take good and kind care of his grandparents and family, but he also is very involved in school and stays on top of his schoolwork. There's nothing that can stop this young man from reaching his goals and dreams. Henry has done everything in his power to be a successful student and always sets himself up for his future college journey. I remember when Henry was first coming to high school, and he knew he was going to take a Spanish class in the fall, and he was very nervous, and he knew it was going to be challenging to learn a new language, so he came to me and said, "Can I get any Spanish materials that you have?" So I gave him books and notes and all sorts of things, and he spent his own time studying for the class to make sure that he was doing well. And he made it all the way through the AP 5, 6, or 5, 6 classes and did really well. So, and Henry is also very involved in both the community and his school. He's a member of the Speech and Debate, mock trial at his school, We the People National Qualifier, Lawyer for Prosecution First Place Regional Champion. He received awards for Best Advocate Award, Best Witness Award, he's part of National Honor Society. And in the community, Henry volunteered, he volunteered his time at the Wells Discovery Museum as a volunteer there. He also had an internship at the Renown Emergency Room, and Henry played the Buddha and the Lion Dance at the Asian American Pacific Islander Graduation Celebration. So he did a great job. Not only that, he's the recipient of a $30,000 scholarship for the Polly E. Westover Scholarship. Above all else, I just wanted to nominate Henry tonight so that he knows that we see him, and we see the sacrifices and his greatness. He's going to be a great professional one day. Henry has many little brothers and sisters, and I don't know if he knows that he's setting the path for them and changing their entire attitude about education and how they foresee their future as first-generation siblings. So I want him to know, we are very proud of him, and we recognize all of his hard work and ethic.
So Henry, my goodness gracious, where are you going to go to college?
I'm actually going to go to University of Nevada.
Great. And what's your major going to be?
I'm kind of stuck at the crossroads right now. I'm really interested, as of right now, to go into psychological law. My dad is actually a drug addict, going on and off, so I was really interested in just helping those individuals, whether they be rapists, murderers, and homicide victims, just to analyze them, because I feel like, as the cliche goes, you always look for the greener grass, but you always leave this part behind, like the dead grass, and I feel as though you don't really find greener grass on the other side, you're supposed to make what you have of it that green grass. So I've always wanted to be that other side of things and just helping individuals.
How old are you? I don't know if I've learned that lesson yet. Well, congratulations. I went to law school, I loved law school, this debate and looking at issues and everything, sounds like you'll, you'll fit right in there, and will do a great job. Do you have anybody in the audience you brought with you?
Yes, I actually brought my mother over there.
Oh, great. And I know Superintendent Martinez has kind of the same path as being the oldest child with many siblings and being the first to go to not only graduate high school, but also go to college as well, and so...
Absolutely. Henry, how many brothers and sisters do you have?
I have five or six, I think, I lose count.
So my parents...
When you lose them, it happens.
So my parents had 12 children, Henry, and, you know, those are the times when, you know, families were that big, but, you know, it really is true that it's amazing when you, it is always the hardest when you're a first-generation student, but it, but it always amazes me how much my siblings talk to me about how they made decisions based on my decision. So I want to just compliment you, because I can just imagine, just from your story, the kind of challenges that you've experienced in your life, and the fact that you're taking it to heart, and you're going to dedicate your life to helping other people just says the world about you. So congratulations, well-earned, and for Ton as well, that I know he just spoke before you, but both students, amazing nominations.
Well, and also, all of our scholars here from the, the club as well, because they're, they're all outstanding, and we didn't get to hear about all your individual accomplishments, but I'm sure they're well-done as well. So thank you and congratulations. So, Trustee Rosenberg, you have a resolution to read?
I do. Resolution by the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have lived and worked in Nevada and have played a part in the rich cultural heritage of this state, whereas Asian American and...
Oh, we're going to take a picture, if you want to wait just a second? We'd love to have you in the picture. Sorry, Trustee Rosenberg.
That's quite all right.
Okay.
Don't move. Whereas, Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month acknowledges and celebrates the contributions made by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the arts, education, science, government, and economic development of Nevada and its social and democratic institutions, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month provides the opportunity to educate students on the Asian American and Pacific Islander roles in American history and the advancement of civil rights and equal opportunity for all people. Now therefore, in consideration of the above, the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees does hereby recognize May 2014 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, presented to the Reno High School Asian Pacific Islanders Club and to Ton Chung from Sparks High School, a senior, and Henry Eng, Reno High School senior. Congratulations.
So if everybody would come on up, and then we'll take a picture. Everybody in the club, too.
Yeah, we, we have this lens that goes to the...
What? Oh, they moved it.
I wonder why they moved it, they were going to take a picture.
Did you get my email?
Yes, I did.
No, I'm sorry.
I wish she was in person.
All right, let's put it over here, how about yourself?
Let's, let's maybe move the chairs out of the way so that we can...
We got a deal, but should I help?
I sent you the information.
I'm slow taking...
Just tell Terry that you passed.
Are you ready?
Of course.
I'm not, I'm not on the speed, so it's too slow.
Congratulations, everyone, and we look forward to seeing your bright futures, because we know we're going to read about you in the future. Good luck.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You walked in, and I was like, it's 43. It is. It reminds me of Mr. Zimmet.
President Clark, if I may, I would like to note the absence of the Reno Gazette Journal, who might really have a front-page story that's worth something. Okay, so we're going to go on now to our consent agenda. Did anybody have anything they wanted to pull?
On anything?
Nope. I assume that, since Trustee Ozzy's not here, if we need to bring something back, we will, but I'll go ahead and accept a motion right now for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion, was there anything on the consent agenda? Great. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, so now we're going to do...
economy, and obviously, as we went through this process with you, you've seen some of that as well. So we're certainly not by ourselves. And what I'm also pleased to report is some of the things that you've pushed us to be more transformative with in terms of transparency is happening around the country as well. So we're definitely keeping up with our peers around the country, so I'm glad to report that. And it was good to spend three days back there and gather some ideas that I think will help us as we move forward and I'll work with our team on some of those things. But I did want to reflect back on the budget process itself this last year, and I stole a little bit from Leon Cioni, some of the things that I've heard there, but I think the first thing that I think about is the trust that we've established in the budget through the collaboration between the Board, the superintendent, leadership team, the business office, and ultimately, the community as we've gone through this process. And part of that process is a constructive or positive conflict, not negative, in terms of that you pushed us to develop a transformational budget process, all the stuff that we went through in a day and a half with you. And I think this has made us better and the whole process better. So I'm really pleased that you were able to push us and make us better. And third is, again, the commitment to the strategic plan. I think doing both the strategic plan and the budget process just reminded us of the importance of making sure that we were making sure that we're getting the strategic plan to align to the budget, and that's imperative in any organization as well as ours. And next is accountability. Just, you know, by its very nature, the budget has to be accountable, and again, aligning it to the strategic plan makes us all want to be accountable and making sure that we're balancing our budget and ultimately getting to the results of what we're trying to accomplish, having our students be in college and career-ready. So again, I just wanted to take a moment to reflect back on what we've accomplished this year. So those are my opening comments, and now I'll dive into the PowerPoint and take into that process. So what we'd like to do is recap what we've been through with you in terms of the budget timeline, talk to you a little bit about the budget shortfall, our sources and uses of funds, the expenditures by the fund type, our revenues and our expenditures, the other district funds other than the district's general fund, just a little touching back a little bit on the detailed budget information and budget issues that we still have to be cognizant of, and then again, our recommendation as this is our final budget, if that's the will of the Board. So just to kind of remind us of where we've been, and we have at the top of this our hearing that we had with you on the 19th and the 20th, the day and a half that we spent doing a deep dive into the budget, and I found that to be a very productive session. I think I've heard from all of the Board that you felt that that was the case, too. But even before the 19th and the 20th, we had the discussions and the deliberations prior to the 19th and the 20th that led us to the 19th and the 20th. And we certainly couldn't have pulled off the 19th and the 20th if we hadn't had those discussions and bringing the city of Reno in to talk to us and whatnot. So again, we want to thank you for that. The Board did adopt the tentative budget on April 8th, and then we've since filed that with the state. And then today, on the 21st, we're having this tentative budget hearing. And again, our goal is to have the final budget submitted to the Department of Taxation by June 8th, but again, we can adopt that budget this evening, again, as the will of the Board. And just again, just as a reminder, we did a budget review in alignment with the priorities, i.e. the strategic plan, so those discussions took place throughout this process. We did have the workshops and the town hall meetings, and again, we heard you loud and clear, and we worked very closely with Communications to try and change the way we present that budget to the public, and I think from what I've heard, it was well-received. And then finally, the Department of Taxation, final projections were presented to us throughout this process. So I'm pleased to say that we have a balanced budget for you. Again, we do have a revenue shortfall in relation to the expenditures, but because of the prudent budgeting that we've been doing and the fiscal management over the last several years, and we continue to do, we believe that we can make up that difference through our reserves. And that's the reserves that we had at the end of last fiscal year, plus looking at the budget this fiscal year, we believe we can cover the $21.4 million shortfall that we had and present to you a balanced budget. Just as a reminder, we're talking again about a three-quarter of a billion-dollar budget in total, and it's made up of primarily our general fund, the largest portion of our budget, as well as our special revenue or grant funds primarily, our debt service fund paying off our existing bonds, the capital projects, the enterprise fund is our nutrition services fund, and then on the far right-hand column, a total of all of our funds. And again, towards the bottom, total uses about three-quarters of a billion dollars, pretty good-sized number. Just by way, and I know you're not crazy about pie charts, but we got a few of them, so just bear with me. 60% of our budget is the general fund. The special revenue or grant funds represent almost 25%. Our debt service is about 7%. Our capital projects is declining and getting down there, 5.45%, and our enterprise fund is 3.34%. In terms of revenues, just to remind you of our major revenue categories in the general fund, $425.2 million in total, the largest component being the State Distributive School Fund at $154 million, closely followed by sales taxes or local school support taxes at $152 million and property taxes at $91.5 million, and then the remainder of the categories on the lower right-hand side. In terms of expenditures, there's a breakdown of our expenditures, and again, the bulk of our expenditures do go into the classroom, and we've broken down the remaining components so that you can see how the breakdown of the budget works. And again, we went through that with you in detail at the workshop back in March. In terms of the general fund expenditures, as we've constantly presented to you, school districts by their nature are labor-intensive, and so nearly 90% or 88.54%, to be more specific, is salary and benefit-driven within the general fund budget. Just by way of reminder, we do have other funds other than the general fund, again, and they tend to all be restricted for the purposes of those funds, and so they're not funds that we can utilize to help balance the general fund's budget. So, and again, this is a slide that we presented back to you in March, but again, I like to always bring this one back up just as a reminder for both the Board and the community to let them know that those funds do have restrictions on their purposes. As you recall, this is one of the pages out of the detailed budget presentation that we did back for you in March, and again, I think it was well-received by the Board, and we've gotten nothing but positive comments about the detail that existed within the budget. So thank you, Trustee Azzie, for help and other trustees for bringing this approach to us, and I want to again, take just a moment to thank the entire business office staff that worked very, very hard to make sure that you got this information, and we have expressed your thanks back to them from previous Board meetings as well. So just as a reminder of, so again, balanced budget, good news, but again, I'd be remiss if I didn't say we're not completely out of the woods moving forward. We're coming to the end of this fiscal year. Next year is a legislative year, and so as our budget analyst has presented, our Budget Director has presented to you in the past, we still have budget shortfalls moving forward that we'll have to be mindful of as, you know, as our reserves are starting to be depleted, and so we'll certainly be mindful of that, and as we go into the national legislative session, we will certainly be expressing that in the legislative sessions. We've got ongoing collective bargaining with all of our associations, with the exception of the Principals Group this year, and so we've got to be mindful of the outcomes of those negotiations. We've had a lot of discussion about our future capital needs and what we're going to have to do in the next legislative session to see what we can do to try and move that penny somewhere, and it's certainly a concern for us, and I think a concern for a number of school districts around the state. Again, I just touched on the legislative session, and the last piece of that legislative session is the new state funding model, and I know Superintendent Martinez has said at several Board meetings that is a concern for all of us moving forward in this next legislative session as we look to see what the legislature may try to do to the funding formula. Superintendent Martinez is on the main working, or on the main committee, and we have our Budget Director, Mike Schroeder, on the working committee, and I do believe the recommendations are soon to come forward with regard to the funding formula, so we'll keep you posted on that. I know that we did potentially have an item for consideration this evening, but I believe that's been pulled back as they worked on the draft to get it finalized, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. Trustee Mayor and Trustee Rosenberg, we're on the conference call. The, as you can imagine, this is a very delicate subject, especially with the South, and so there is a lot of work among the NASB representatives around trying to come up with some kind of compromise resolution. But like I said, it's just, it's a very touchy subject, just because, you know, when you have one county that's going to benefit potentially at the cost of everybody else, it's just an interesting process. So we're hoping to have a resolution for you for the June 10th Board meeting, and of course, your representatives will review that before it comes to you, and then we're also hoping to adopt it also with the Nevada Association of Schools Superintendents.
Madam Chairman, as a member of the Nevada State School Board Association's Committee on Equity and Funding, I will say we're working on a resolution jointly with the School Board Association, and that's why Howard and I were on the conference call. We're going through a whole series of it, and what we're trying to do is, sure, Clark County needs more money, but it should be new money. We should have another way of doing it, not to take away from any counties. If they come up with a weighted formula that gives Clark County money, well, we're going to have a bigger shortfall than these guys have ever seen. It's going to be tough. And so what's going to happen is, we're going to have some conference calls and everything, and when we get it set and the Board of Directors gets it to their satisfaction, then it'll come back to this body, to either nay or not, but you can go on to the State School Board Association's website and see it as it changes, because there are some changes that have happened already.
Trustee Rosenberg?
I don't think I have ever seen a more overt demonstration of the north-south idiocy than I saw that night. It's really a shame.
Trustee Azzie?
Can I ask a question on that line? Does Clark County subsidize Washoe County?
I think the reality is that, I mean, we all share a common revenues throughout the state, and they're certainly the largest player in the game, but I think, you know, based on the data that we've seen, I think Clark and Washoe are relatively close. I think there could be an argument made that maybe they have the bigger piece of the pie, but do they subsidize us? That's debatable.
I mean, if the property taxes and sales taxes in Washoe County don't meet the budget that we have here, then they're subsidizing us. And for me, that to me has always been an issue, is I believe if they are, we should acknowledge that and tell them thank you. I mean, we've had the same debate here where we did a study a few years ago that the cities are subsidized and the unincorporated counties, and they just throw up roadblocks saying that's not true, and sometimes all you want is a realization that, yeah, that's happening, instead of fighting over, well, we deserve this. Sometimes thanks goes a lot further.
I would say the short answer, Trustee Azzie, is that Clark County generally subsidizes the entire state just because of the large economy. The complication in this area is that this goes beyond the revenues, because it comes down to the special populations that every district has, and so right now, we've been making the case, part of the task force, that our demographics are almost exactly the same as Clark's, but most community, most, the state didn't realize that. They've always seen as Clark having all the poverty in the state, having all the children that are English-language learners, and so we're trying to help them understand that our demographics have now changed. So there is a perception, I'll call it this, that not only is Clark County subsidizing the rest of the state, but they're subsidizing it at the cost of their special, of their media subgroups. And so that's what makes this a little more complicated.
But even in that one, if you say our demographics have changed to match Clark County's, that means they have been subsidizing it in the past, and we don't even want to acknowledge that, to say...
We need to.
Madam Chairman, President, that's not always true, because they don't look at the full financing picture. We have been behind them in title funding for, since I was a beginning teacher. We've never been equal to them in title-one funding.
I don't know, let me ask, who decides where title funding goes? The feds or the state?
It's both. It goes into two parts, and they've never really looked at the cost to educate a child in, let's say, Persian County as an example, as compared to the cost that Clark County gets. For one thing, recruiting teachers is a much harder job in Nye County than it is in Las Vegas. So if you look at the whole picture, we're pretty equal. But if you just look at the basic support, we probably aren't equal. So, and that's what this committee's trying to do, is to raise the base and forget about the other funding, but raise the base and then do something for Clark County off of the raising of the base to make it equal, because it's not equal, and it hasn't been. I don't ever recall, Barbara, have you ever known title-one to money and to funding being equal? I haven't.
It's complicated.
It is complicated. Trustee McClary?
I was at a School Boards Association meeting, and one of the superintendents who was there said, "According to the proposed formula, he would be paying 25% of his total budget would go to Clark County that may help them for like a week." It was just incredible.
And philosophically, you could apply the same argument to virtually everything in life. I mean, the taxes that say 80-year-old seniors living on Social Security that puts into our tax system for our local economy may be different than what the CEO at Microsoft puts in, but they're using the same roads, they're getting the same police and safety services. So in life, I'm not sure that everything is always equal. And so to, you know, use that premise when I'm not sure it applies across the board, just philosophically, just...
And I hear the county commissioner saying the exact same thing. I mean, I'm telling you, viscerally...
I'm not disagreeing what you said about acknowledging it.
Viscerally, it's just, if they believe it's true, and we're all saying, well, it sort of is true and maybe not, and when you have to justify it that much, you got a problem.
Trustee Rosenberg?
I think Estella and I know better than anybody else just how bad this can be, because we're getting cut drastically.
We're living it right now.
And we're living it. And in a way, it's no one's fault and it's everyone's fault, but most of it is hurt feelings. I think Trustee Azzie is right there. If we would just acknowledge, that's the way it's been, okay, forget it. Here's what we're faced with. What do you suggest that we do so that nobody gets completely cut off?
And I think to the credit of the Nevada School Board Association, I think that's what they're trying to really do, because as you know, Trustee Rosenberg, on that conference call, you know, there were three Clark County trustees, and it was a really good conversation about how do we come together so that, because this does have the ability to tear the state apart. It really does. And like you said, higher ed went through it in the last session. our tax system for our local economy may be different than what the CEO at Microsoft puts in, but they're using the same roads. They're getting the same police and safety services. So in life, I'm not sure that everything is always equal. And so to, you know, use that premise when I'm not sure it applies across the board, just philosophically, just.
And I hear, I hear the county commissioner saying the exact same thing. I mean, I'm telling you, viscerally.
I'm not disagreeing what you said about acknowledging it.
Viscerally, it's just, if they believe it's true, and we're all saying, well, it sort of is true and maybe not. When you have to justify it that much, you got a problem.
Trustee Rosenberg?
I think Estella and I know better than anybody else just how bad this can be, because we're getting cut drastically.
We're living it right now.
And we're living it. And in a way, it's no one's fault and it's everyone's fault, but most of it is hurt feelings. I think Trustee Iasi is right there. If we would just acknowledge, that's the way it's been, okay, forget it. Here's what we're faced with. What do you suggest that we do, so that nobody gets completely cut off?
And I think to the credit of, of the Nevada School Board Association, I think that's what they're trying to really do. Because, as you know, Trustee Rosenberg, on that conference call, you know, there were three Clark County trustees.
Yeah.
And it was a really good conversation about how do we come together so that, because this does have the ability to tear the state apart.
Oh, yes.
It really does. And like you said, HIREIT went through it in the last session. It was very painful.
Oh, yeah.
I, I can tell you right now, I don't see any other issue dominating the legislation but this one for education.
Yeah.
This will be the issue. Everything else will be very small compared to this issue.
The, the last two days of legislature, when they get to education.
But I mean, in general, the conversations that will be going on will be dominated by this issue.
Yeah, let's hope it dominates the session, that these conversations.
Sally, it will.
I think Trustee Iasi has a good point.
Okay, Mr. Schroeder, welcome. Did you have anything that you wanted to add that?
You get a ticket on the way back?
Tom is the more social one, so I'm sure he added, added much more than I would've.
That's right. That is very.
I have a little, I have a little bit more red than Mike, that's what he's saying.
Yes, that's very true.
It's not good for an accountant.
But Mike, I, I did want to take a moment to acknowledge the great work that our budget director, Mike Schroeder, has done on the budget process. He is, he is one of the state's leading experts on the budget. He will, along with Superintendent Martinez and myself, will be actively having these discussions as we move forward on the state funding model. We will represent well. It is going to be a big issue. It is going to be a big challenge, and, and we will tackle it.
And we appreciate the green and blue in you. Right, exactly.
Again, just as a reminder, this is a public hearing, so we do want to entertain opportunity for public comment. And Mike is here to answer any technical questions that you have on, on the budget. We can do a deeper dive if there's any specific questions on, on the balancing mechanisms within the general fund, the adjustments that we made in the capital projects fund. So again, at the, at the pleasure of the board, but I did want to make sure we gave the public an opportunity to comment.
Yes, I have Mr. Appolito.
Thank you.
Madam President, Superintendent Martinez, honorable board members. I had a question, because I know back in September 2013, at the State Board of Education meeting, Superintendent Martinez had mentioned that, that this district was spending $1,700,000 per year for Common Core training. And that was before Aaron somebody was hired, and probably before other money was spent. Is this district really spending almost $2 million a year to train for Common Core?
On professional development?
The, the majority of that's coming from grant funds, so.
It's comprehensive professional development, Superintendent Martinez?
So it covers, that, that's our professional development budget that not only covers the new standards, but also the implementation of technology, our cultural university awareness. We've had, and the trustees have been to some of these sessions where we've had four to 500 teachers on very, on these specific sessions. For example, we had, Trustee Rosenberg and I, we attended one on technology.
Yep.
Just, just how technology is going to change education. So it's a comprehensive professional development budget. The new standards are, are one component of that, but it is $1.7 million.
1.7 million.
And that doesn't count Aaron, the guy, the teacher who's hired just for Common Core?
So Aaron and Tori are part of the curriculum office, and they actually have been in our district for years. So, so our, we've always had a curriculum office that has a focus on math, science, English language arts. That's always been part of our team. And of course, their job is to always make sure that we're up to date on all our content and all our materials.
And now they've come out of the classroom and just specifically are working on Common Core training?
They, they're part of the curriculum office. They have been part, and they've been doing the work they're doing for years now. So this is not nothing new.
But didn't Aaron just, wasn't he in the classroom?
No.
No, okay.
No.
I, I had more comments, but I'm not going to have time. Can I go through them or no? Because I know the time's been clicked.
Sure.
So, okay. So, so far, one state has dropped Common Core. At least 11 states out of the 44 remaining have dropped the Common Core testing. That's the SBAC in Park. At least three states have delayed the testing. At least four states are considering withdrawing from the testing. Of the 44 states that are still in, 33, 75% have legislation pending to stop it, slow it, or not fund it. I don't know why we're spending so much money on it. In this state, we have a lot of opposition to Common Core, and I think Common Core is going to be the biggest legislative issue in the next session. The Republican Party in Nevada, the Nevada Federation of Republican Women, numerous county Republican Parties. The former governor who got us into this, Governor Gibbons, is now against Common Core. The Democratic Party of Carson, of Clark County is now against Common Core. We have teachers' unions, year-old teachers, your Chicago teachers' unions have come out against Common Core. New York teachers have almost come out against Common Core. The Massachusetts teachers have just elected someone who adamantly opposes Common Core, so it looks like they're going to come out against it. This is going to be a big issue. I think you guys should quit wasting money on this. I have more, but maybe I'll hold it till later. I think my time's just about up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Seki.
Mr. McClark. And trustees. Tom earlier spoke and said that this budget is tied specifically to the strategic, to the strategic plan. And recently, you did a survey, going out and asking for input about what the strategic plan was. And the numbers didn't look bad. You know, they, they showed that 80% said that, you know, that this is a good focus on the next three years. It said that 73% thought that we're heading in the right direction. But unfortunately, 93.6% of the people that responded were your employees of the Washoe County School District. So I asked Lindsay Anderson to pull the numbers for just the people that are not employees of the Washoe County School District. Because I work for an organization, we don't pull ourselves. We pull people that we have to deal with, people that we're responsive to. When you go back and look at the numbers, only 58% think that these goals are the good goals for the next five years. And only 52% thinks that we're headed in the right direction for the next five years. To me, this makes me caught, take pause. And I think that it should make you take pause too, and think, are the strategic plans specific enough? Are they really tied to line items? And were they written that way that we can go back and look and say, this is specifically tied to it, and this is the direction that we're going? I think that when you go through and you look at some of the comments, people talk about the word vague. There are obviously people that have some bones to grind if you go back and read through them, but they talk about different directions in which the community thinks that we need to be headed, and that we need to be focusing on, and they're very specific about it. And a lot of these things are not lined in the budget, and they are not in the strategic plan. So my suggestion would be that you do not vote to pass this budget today, but you take at least another week to go through the budget, look and see if you need to modify strategic plans, or give yourselves in your own statements, this line item means this, and these are the things that are tied to it, and submit that back to the public. Because I think that if you're graded on this, you're failing, or a D minus at best. And I don't think that that's what we want to be going forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, Trustee Iasi.
Full public comment?
Yes, that's all the public comment. And we will make the action, I have, we need to close the public hearing before we take action, but certainly discussion can be in the public hearing. So go ahead, Trustee Iasi.
Well, if you want to close the public hearing, then we'll talk after that.
Is everybody ready to have that happen?
We need a public comment.
Nope, I don't see any. Any other public comment on the budget? Okay, so the board of trustees will close the public hearing of the 2014 and 15 budget. And now comes back to the board, Trustee Iasi.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Mr. Appolito?
Yes, sir.
I want, I want to ask what your other comments were.
Come on up to the.
I can't respond to you under public comment, but now I can ask you a question like I can ask anybody questions. So I wanted, I wanted just to make sure that on the record, we get your concerns.
Thank you, thank you, Trustee Iasi. And I don't have too much more, it's probably less than a minute.
One, there is one local superintendent in this state who has told the parents that he will not require their students to take the Common Core tests. And that's the SBAC test that we're probably going to be taking. To me.
Okay, Mr. Appolito, one thing, I'm, I'm asking you to tell me what else you had. We already heard your comments about the Common Core.
Okay.
You said there were other issues in the budget you wanted to discuss?
No, not in the budget.
Oh, okay.
I had a question, that was in on the budget.
Okay, so I understand you're, you're opposed to Common Core and spending on Common Core.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a tad more, but I'll do it later.
Okay, thanks. I thought you had other, other items.
No, sir. Thank you, sorry.
And then for, for staff, I want to make, I want to make sure I understand the shortfall, the 21.4 million shortfall. We had $15 million from reserves, correct?
From the prior year.
And what does that leave us in reserves at the end of this budget year?
We have 17 million. A million of that is inventory, about 9 million is what we call our 2% ending fund balance related to expenditures.
So at this time next year, we'll have $17 million.
To start the year.
To, to start the year, correct. Okay. And then the other 6 million is being taken up, how?
That, that would be out of savings in the current fiscal year. So we'll feel, because of our prudent financial practices, we should be able to save enough to carry that forward into this next fiscal year to cover the rest of it.
We'll know that by, by, I mean, I saw that our, our third quarter looked better in finances than we thought, but we won't really know until September of next year, because it could change the last quarter again.
Until we finish the audit, I mean, we've got a lot of expenditures occur after the end of the year, and we accrue payrolls and things like that.
So we don't feel we'll have to cut anything? If it, if it doesn't meet the projections and save the $6 million, what happens?
Oh, we're pretty confident we'll make it.
I mean, based on trends from prior years, we're, we're right in line with where we've been, so.
Okay, and then on page 20 of your report, I want to get this out to the public, because a lot of people don't do this, the OPEB funding, we're funding that to which amount now?
Well, it's related to the annual required contribution that we get from our actuary. This was based on a prior year. We hadn't got our actuary report back in time. But when we come forward in fiscal year 15, we can adjust that to what the actuary report was.
So are we behind in OPEB funding, or has a district, I've said this before, and I want to make this public, there's other jurisdictions out here who haven't funded OPEB.
We're, we're about the only ones that do. The county did for a period of time, but the Washoe County School District in the state in Nevada is about the only one that funds ARC. And I can also tell you around the country, we're, we're one of the rare few that does. And it's, it's, it's a liability, our unfunded liability on there is well over $100 million. And so we've been funding that from inception back in 2008. And, and we're proud to say that we are, because as time goes forward, by funding that liability, our costs are going to come down, and that's the whole premise behind it.
So do we still have an unfunded liability with that? We're trying to catch up?
Yeah, but we're only required to fund the ARC, the annual required contribution. You, you're given a 30-year amortization to fund that, that liability.
To Trustee Iasi's point, we are, we are one of the few local governments in the country that does this, which requires a lot of discipline, because most people just wait till the bill comes due, and then you have to figure out where you're going to get it from.
And how much is that this year we're putting into OPEB?
I think the ARC portion is about $5 million.
Right.
It's the, basically the $100 million portion which you're trying to fund. Part of the, part of what we're putting in there is to pay for costs.
Final here is $15 million?
The, the total ARC will be in the neighborhood of $12 million. What Mike's talking about, there's, there's two different pieces of it. We, we fund the public employees, Bennett, we have some prior retirees that are on the public employees plan. And so half of that cost, that, that cost remains with the local jurisdiction, our, our school district. And that cost is a little over $5 million to us. And then the, the total ARC is a little over 11, almost $12 million. And so the other portion of that is the portion that we put into the trust fund. We, we put all the funding into the trusts, and then we have to pay the state for the, for the past district retirees, but it's, it counts towards our ARC. So the, the total cost for, for the ARC for, for an, for each given year is in the $11 million range, Trustee Iasi.
Thank you. And that also goes to, to the employees sometimes. In other jurisdictions, if they don't fund OPEB, they could give that as raises perhaps, but then their, their benefits might be in trouble later on.
I'm not sure I followed that thought process. Help me out with that.
You're, you're exactly correct.
Yeah, another government.
He got it, I didn't.
If I don't put that money to OPEB, it would be in my general.
Oh, I see your point, yes, yes.
It would be available for other things, but it's still going directly to the employee.
It's to the benefit of the employees. You are absolutely correct.
I have one on page 14. Let me find it now. Oh, on, on those, it looks like those changed a lot. That's the only columns I saw that changed a lot from the tentative and the final budget. So you just go through, it's a public meeting, like opening fund balance, before it was 76 million, now it's 57 million. Now, just why, why those columns have changed so much? This is the only page where a lot of that's changed from our tentative.
Yeah, so these are the items that you'd be approving today. So when we did the tentative budget, the board had not committed any of the remaining funds for the capital projects fund. Since that time, you had met and gone with the recommendations that had come forward. So essentially, all of this is committed now. We've said we're going to do these projects with the remaining funds. A portion of those are going to start in the current fiscal year. So that means the opening fund balance is going to be lower, because we're going to spend some money this year. The rest of those projects will continue into next fiscal year. We won't spend the entire amount, so we're just estimating approximately what we might spend in fiscal year 15. And even though there's going to be an ending fund balance, it, all those funds are committed.
And we're talking about capital projects.
Yes, correct.
And that's from the, is that from the bond funds?
Yes.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, but I didn't know whether they picked up, we were talking about general fund, and now we're talking about capital.
And my, my last question is to make sure that everything we talked about at the previous meetings, the spreadsheet we had about, about the psychologist and all that is in this budget and nothing else.
All of this part is taken out.
Correct, yes.
Throw my questions until comments.
Well, I, oh.
So I just have a couple of comments. Well, one, thank you. I think you guys really just hit the, hit it out of the park. You've done a tremendous job in, in this process. And I know it wasn't easy to get there initially, and, and I want to credit the board as a whole. I know in the beginning, Trustee Iasi is kind of the numbers guy. We saw that in our emergenetics day when we spent our, looking at our profiles. But I really want to give credit to the board for their willingness to have the city of Reno come in. And credit to our, you know, founding president of the, our education foundation, Perry DiLoretto, for putting that meeting together with Superintendent Martinez and myself, with Andrew Klinger. I think, you know, that was really a brave move of this, of the trustees to allow another entity to come in and talk about their budget process. So, you know, I, I think that took a lot for you guys to do that, and I really appreciate you doing that. So I want to just talk about next year, where we're going, that we talked about our department reports being connected to the budget process next year. So have we made a decision on that yet? And, and are we moving forward with that process?
So, of course, no decisions have been made. This is a conversation we want to have with you, and it's, frankly, it's your, it's your decision, really. One of the recommendations that we're probably going to make to you as staff is that we, right now, we have monthly monitoring reports. What we like to do is first of all, align all the reports to the metrics on the strategic plan. So that's the first thing. The second is, instead of maybe doing monthly reports, maybe we do workshops, and we tie them right around the budget process. So we can, you know, there's a lot of details there for us to sort of work, you know, figure out and work out with you, but, you know, one of the comments we want to have with you is, is exactly what you have asked, which is, can we tie those, those reporting mechanisms to the budget process?
Yeah.
And frankly, also, it actually would be better, best for staff, and actually would also be more efficient in your meetings, because we could have, for example, all of academics together on one day. You could have all of operations all in one day. So that way, it's really easy for you to tie it right to the goals and the metrics. And we could do it so that it's right before the budget process and talk about implications if, if departments are not meeting their goals, or they're having, struggling, or, or as you look at, you know, metrics in the future, what is it going to require, especially on the budget side? So I think it's, so it's something we want to discuss with you. And like I said, you know, we want, we, I would, you know, I would recommend that you let us put some recommendations for you. You take a look at them, and again, it'll be your purview, it'll be your decision to make.
So when would you bring the recommendations back to the board?
My suggestion would be that we would bring them to you. My suggestion would be that we would bring them to you. We could bring them to you right before the end of the school year. So, in probably the second June meeting, we'd be more than prepared for that. And then, like I said, we could tie everything together, including my, you know, my future evaluations to be tied with it as well.
Okay.
So, what our cycle is, is we're starting budgets earlier than January, February, March. We're starting them in the fall.
Good.
Be able to have.
Good.
I think that's what we came out of last year and looking forward to this next year that we have the budget conversations so that, you know, we have as much time as we need to spend on them.
And then, I'm sorry, I had one more comment because I wanted to acknowledge Rick's comment about the strategic plan survey and the timing of it. And so, I think we need to be more mindful of that next year, getting the survey out a little bit more in advance of approving the budget if we're trying to tie everything together. And so, we have an opportunity to look at that feedback and, because can we still make changes based?
It's a fluid budget. The board of trustees at any time can, within the budget, make a change as they go along. It's just like our budget is at home. If we decide that we're not going to have apples and midway through the year and we're going to have oranges, that's the purview of the board of trustees. There's all sorts of ripple effects, but that's the purview of the board of trustees.
So, maybe the trustees don't see a need to do the survey differently next year based off of that feedback. I just wanted to acknowledge that. Is the, oops, is the timing right with the survey?
Well, I wanted to, I'll make a couple of comments on the survey because I did go through that. I just wanted to go back to the 17 million ending fund balance and to note that that includes the set aside of 7.5 million that we have for lawsuits that we are still in the courts, but anticipating that we're going to have to come up with funding. So, again, it's fiscally being aware of what our future holds.
Absolutely.
And trying to set that money aside. So, we may start off with 17 million next time and we may or may not keep that set aside for lawsuits, but that potential is still out there. So, I just wanted to mention that for the public as well. And I did look and go through our survey and looking at this as we prepare for this meeting. And I do recognize what Mr. Seki's saying in some of the items. Certainly, as it came up many times about the technology in which the board has tried to take care of out of the capital funding, not so much the operational funding. So, there was a lot of positive remarks in this towards that, that people do see that we need more funding towards technology. I wanted, you know, some of them are about full-day kindergarten and other types of things that may not necessarily be within our purview to make within our budget decisions. Full-day kindergarten is usually something that we get funded out of the legislature because it's a very high-ticket item. You know, so there were some things in there about that, that we are very aware of and had to have those conversations and still chose to make these decisions. So, I wanted to make sure, Mr. Seki, that, yes, we may not have hit everything, but we did have many conversations throughout the budget process on many of these items that were in here and not all of them are within our purview to make those decisions to allocate towards. I did want to point out on our budget that 88.5% is salaries. But again, you know, to make it more familiar for people to understand, we're, our product is children. As I've said publicly, if a child has a headache, they as an adult, they're not an adult, they can't take an aspirin on their own. We need to have someone that, a nurse or a nurse practitioner or someone that they can go to to be able to take that aspirin. They can't go out on the playground and play by themselves unsupervised. So, virtually, everything within the nature of our business is very people-intensive. The children cannot get themselves to work or to school like adults can if they're in a corporation or business corporation. So, we often get hit on budget that we have very people-intensive. And we are people-intensive because our product, there's children and children cannot do anything on their own. They have to have adults with them. So, that means that we have to have a counselor because our children can't take themselves to a counselor and pay for it on the outside. We provide nutrition services because we feed them. So, it is very people-intensive and I think people need to start realizing that when they want to compare us to business. However, very much on the operational side, we always are looking at efficiencies. Our staff at our board are always looking at efficiencies, but again, children are very people-intensive. I noticed in this report as well that it says Nevada Legislature needs to give us more money. We certainly have taken cuts over the years that I have been a trustee for eight years, virtually every year from the legislature. However, in, with that, we recognize that. But just as we, with my budget, I'm always would like to have more revenue. My expenditures sometimes go past my revenue and it's just the nature of the beast that the school district as well as we as individuals are always constantly trying to balance our expenditures with our revenue. And that's just the nature of our business and it may be up or it may be down. It certainly has been down for a long time. So, anyways, appreciate being able to see this from communications. Those are all my comments and questions. Anybody else? Trustee Rosenberg?
The budget is one thing. This business on the Common Core really is disturbing. I have a very simplistic idea of what Common Core is. It means that if Johnny is in the third grade in Macon, Georgia, and he's reading at one level and he comes to Reno, Nevada, he should be reading at the same level. The whole idea isn't an end, it's a beginning. And I realize that a lot of states have dropped it. And I think most of that is out of plain unmitigated fear. And I don't know what there is to be afraid of. In elementary school particularly, a kid comes into you on a transfer and he doesn't have what he needs, you've got double trouble. Number one, you've got to bring him up intellectually, you've got to bring him up emotionally, too. That's a terrible thing to put on a child. So, I really have a problem understanding what this mad, you know, I'm against Common Core is about. I'm not saying you're wrong. I am saying I'm having a problem understanding it. Insofar as the budget is concerned, no matter what we decide to do, it is going to cost more money. We don't have any choice. The survey, I'm disturbed that there is such a great difference between the two. By the same token, if you find that that is the case, then the survey is invalid and unreliable. So, that it was wonderful to hear from some people, but we didn't hear from enough people on a broader base to understand exactly what the community is thinking. And many times, I hate saying this, but I'm going to, we talk at one another, not to one another. I need to talk with Rick. You need to tell me what the hell it is that you're seeing and I'm not. And John, for you too, your arguments are perfectly rational and perfectly logical, which scares the hell out of me because this is education. There's nothing rational or logical about it. But we need to talk.
Trustee Iasi.
We're not adopting the strategic plan today, are we?
No, you're not.
That's what I thought. Because my opinion of the survey was, I agree that this might not be ready to go, but we're not adopting it today.
Right.
I will differ with Mr. Seki on a few things, saying that we poll people that you're responsible for. But I have to recall that the people who live and work in Washoe County School District also live and pay taxes in Washoe County and they have just as much right as anyone else to say something. That being said, I think we should still go out further and try to get the public to comment on these.
Sure.
But quite honestly, a lot of this relates more to the educators in the classroom than it would be. So, if people are that interested, I hope they want to read it. And the other part was, it's going to come back to us with, at the end of the day, you'll come back and there's the budget amounts with it. And if we decide, the public says, I don't want this, then we can say, okay, we won't do that. And then that would change the budget, which can then come back and change us. But when he talks at 6.4%, that's only 17 people.
Yeah.
I mean, so when you say, I mean, if you look at it the other way, if you say that 58% of the people didn't like it or don't, still, we're talking between eight or nine people, which only shows me that we have to go out more and have more of that discussion to see if that's actually a representative basis for that. And I'm hoping that's what we look at with the strategic plan. With the budget, the budget is something that can be changed. It's not so easy after today if we vote for this. It can't be changed on a whim, which is why you do this. You have to have a big full-blown meeting. But I'm very happy with the way this came out this year and I'm very happy with that the public can have a lot more knowledge and if they want to look at the budget and see where everything's going and have specific questions. And next year will be even better because then you can have an actual comparison between two years.
Two years, absolutely.
To see what's working and not working. So, thank you Superintendent and you guys for just, and your staff for just making this a, working really hard this year. So, I really appreciate it.
Well, and a lot of credit goes to the trustees because Trustee Iasi.
All we had to do was say, do this.
No, but you and your colleagues, you and your colleagues have pushed us in the right way, in a very healthy way. And I think frankly, we all get stronger when we do that together.
Yeah.
So, again, I think, you know, it always starts at this level, you set the tone and frankly, and as you said, every year, we're going to get better. And I can't wait for the community to see our new tools around the transparency of expenditures because now you'll be able to not only have a budget, but also see how we're spending money on a real-time basis.
And of course, the videos that are on the website will remain there. So, people can still go and look at the budget, they can still go look at the strategic plan, and they can still fill out the survey. Certainly, we can do better. We need to do better on that. But we did better in putting those videos on the website, coming up with those videos. That was a new step that we did this year and I give the finance department as well as the communications department kudos for putting together those things because at 12:00 midnight, you can go or next Thursday or three months from now and you say, ah, I want to, it's going to be there. So, it's not just one evening at Wooster's Theater, it is there 24/7. And then, as well, when our budget's on there and our checkbook is on there and you have our emails 24/7, you can look and then 24/7, you can email a question, which hopefully we'll be able to respond to. So, great job. So, does the board wish to make a motion to adopt the budget tonight? Trustee Mayor?
I move that we adopt the budget as presented and that we make this adoption final, this budget final.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you again, trustees.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the effort.
Thank you. It's good night for me. I'll be over at Hug High School, seen some marvelous young men. One of them has won the Gates Scholarship for Masters.
Please give them my best, Trustee Mayor, the Salario Brothers.
Yes.
Both Jose and Antonio, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Mayor. We'll see you next week. Are we meeting next week?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Oh, boy, those Tuesdays. One right after the other.
Just wondering what because of the budget.
Can we have, let's do a 10-minute break and then we have the Office of School Performance Options Areas Department Report Counseling Equity and Diversity Department.
Yep.
And that's our last item, so.
Barbara.
All right.
It's just easier.
We'll go ahead and bring the meeting back to order. Office of School Performance, Equity and Diversity Department. Welcome, Ms. Loudon.
Thank you.
And Mr. Doring.
President Clark, Superintendent Martinez, members of the board. Good evening. For the record, I'm Mike Doring, Executive Director of Options. And I'm here tonight to introduce my colleague, our Director of Counseling and Equity Diversity, Catherine Loudon. Last week, the board had an opportunity to hear from three of the leaders in our options zone and I hope gained a greater understanding of some of the great work that we're doing in options. And tonight, we're going to continue with that trend with the Equity Diversity Counseling Department. I was speaking to Catherine during the break and I, maybe I have to put a disclaimer out there because I'm a former high school counselor myself, but I truly believe that of all of our departments, that counseling, equity, diversity has such a huge impact in all of our schools with students, parents, families, staff. And it's a lot of great work that's being done in this department. So, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine.
Thank you very much, President Clark and Superintendent Martinez and members of the Board of Trustees. I wanted to start out this evening by thanking Trustee Rosenberg for handling, announcing my daughter Hope's name at graduation. I know you're not aware that you did that, but I was very much aware and so was she. So, thank you very much. And it's very nice to see that your own children graduate.
Yes. I've got a job.
Right.
That's it.
Right. So, that being said, I want to say that the.
Wait a minute, back up. You mean one of your twin daughters already graduated from you and I?
Yes, Hope.
What to their graduation, what?
Yes.
Like two years ago?
Hope graduated. She took advantage of the Trekkie Meadows Community College program in our high schools as well as our advanced placement classes. And she has already graduated and she's headed to Joe Jakarta, Indonesia to study there. Yeah.
Well, sorry, but I know I was just at her graduation. It was horrible to me. How did that happen?
Her sister still has a year left.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Good.
All right.
Okay. So, I, the reorganization and alignment, including the options program, has provided a lot of opportunities. And like the other departments that presented for you last week, family engagement, multi-tiered systems of support and social emotional learning, counseling, equity and diversity are things that are very much embedded into what's happening every day in schools. And through the cooperation and the joining of those two departments, which is very much a symbiotic relationship where we are able to help one another and work as a team, we've become one family. And we're, it's an ambitious endeavor and I'm sure as I proceed through the presentation, you'll see that. But the collaboration and partnership was existing even before that. So, with the Student Advisory Board, Mind Up Campaign, with Indian Education, with P-16 Initiatives, Study Circles, and even things such as partnering to bring the Southern Poverty Law Center for Teaching Tolerance to present. So, as Mr. Doring mentioned, counseling very much touches many different things and most of our services supports initiatives have to have counselor support. So, one of the main things that we do is ensure that there is a well-trained counselor in each and every school. And that is something that if we have counselors that are qualified and trained, then we know that they are partnering with others. In the right-hand column on the PowerPoint, you can see all of the different things or many of the different things, except for equity and diversity, which has another site coming up soon, that our department has supervision of. One particular group that often never is recognized, but they are always behind the scenes doing lots of work are our Career Center facilitators. Career Center facilitators are in our high schools and they are employees that used to be housed under libraries and they were an assistant of the librarian and they are now very much an active participant in ensuring that our students have scholarships, that they're learning how to apply for jobs and connect to jobs, that they're partnering with our universities and career colleges. And they're very much an active part of everything that's happened. And I'm very proud of their work and would like an opportunity to present more about their work, you know, perhaps at a later time. With that, we also have Sexual Health and Responsibility Education, your SHARE program, which is sex education is in grades four, five, six, seven, eight, and High School Health and ROTC. It services over 25,000 students each and every year with a 98% parent participation rate. We have the Office of Civil Rights. A lot of that is connected to equity and diversity and the initiatives that are ensuring an equitable education for all students. And in addition to that, we have the Office of Civil Rights, 504, and Home Hospital. And Student Advisory Board, which you've seen, Elementary Student Attendance Review Board, which we had 47 students go through that board. Senate Bill 370 mandates for foster care, mandated child abuse, suicide, and the Substance Abuse and Violence Intervention Programs, which we had 470 students go through the Violence Intervention Program this year and 520 students go through. the Violence Intervention Program this year, and 520 students go through the Student Advisory Board Program this year. Equity and Diversity has accomplished quite a bit. And many of you were at the Multicultural Senior Day. And you have seen that we had 175 students who participated in that program, and we were able to get information. And Fatima Rivas and Tiffany Young are here tonight. And I have to say that they are both very hardworking individuals who bring a lot of expertise to Washoe County School District. And helping our district move forward with system, systematic, sustainable equity. Tiffany is spending a lot of time, and so has Fatima, on community collaboration, as well as inside the district collaboration. And trustee Ayazi mentioned to the Student Advisory Board that if you're not at the table, you can't be a decision-maker, and you can't advocate, and you can't be somebody that is speaking up for what needs to happen, or providing a perspective. And so, they, on multiple occasions, are sitting at a table, at the table, ensuring that equity is at the forefront of a conversation that's happening. With that, we have a Equity Task Force that has been meeting. And as trustee McClure is well aware, this is quite a bit of work. And something that is necessary to ensure that equity moves forward, as necessary as the systemic embedding of equity into a lot of practices. They're working as a group on informing what's happening in our district. And one of the things that we noticed is there is not a equity-specific policy. And so, the Equity Task Force is looking at an umbrella policy around equity. There's one on cultural recognition, but there is not one that addresses how we, as a district, will move forward with equity at the forefront of what's happening. Some of the other meetings I've attended have, there've been, you know, conversations about common terminology and language. And as many of the predecessors who were in charge of equity prior to this office have worked very hard to do quite a few things, there are still some actions that need to take place. And we are nowhere near where we need to be as a district. There's intensive collaboration with our middle schools and high schools and leadership summits, professional learning that's taking place that I'll discuss a little bit later. If you look at our staff and allocations, again, as a director, I want to say that I'm very humbled to supervise such important things as we have in our department. And that is very much the hard work of the individuals who are in the department, the counselors in the schools, the Career Center facilitators, the home hospital teachers, the SHARE Specialist Catherine Weber Karp, the counseling specialists. And, you know, we've had some changes in staff in the counseling specialists. And so, this year, we have Bob White and now Pam Tisla, also helping Patricia Gilbert and Dee Johnson, as we move forward to serve and support our schools. Our Equity and Diversity Specialists, Fatima Rivas and Tiffany Young, as well as Lynn Manning, who you have heard from in Indian Education. And in addition to that, we do have some grant-funded supports, such as Cheryl Hicks with the Gear Up Program. She's a counselor under our Gear Up Grants that I'll talk about a little bit later. Our office staff is Marnie Sheffield and Shirley Winters. And they are program services technicians and help with our intervention programs, our grants, assigning home hospital, working on 504, and all of those types of things that we have in our office. Major mandates, many of them I alluded to previously, Office of Civil Rights related to equity, in addition to Section 504 and our home hospital services for students, sexual education, 389.965, foster care, child abuse, suicide. We also help with safe and respectful learning environments. We have a role in supporting students with that. And we know that we must have counseling in order to have accreditation and to assist in graduation. And equity also plays a large role in that, in the work that's done. At any given time, just to make sure that I follow up a little bit related to home hospital, we'll have between 13 and 35 home hospital students receiving services from home hospital teachers. It can vary over time. And a lot of our students have a variety of different reasons why they would be on home hospital. But, it's very, very intensive work. And Susan Wanamaker, who is our home hospital teacher, and works with Marnie, to make sure that they're provided with a lot of support. So, now we get to the key performance indicators. And what I want to say is this is the second year with our First Generation Project. We had partnered with Equity and Diversity the year previously with first generation students and counselors. And Fatima was able to put together a survey that enabled our first generation students and our counselors and their work that they were doing with our higher education and our careers, to indicate where they intend to go, what they want to do, again, to participate in FAFSA. We have 83% who have started FAFSA. Not all of them complete FAFSA, as you're aware. 22% intend to go to UNR, 53% Trekkie Meadows Community College, 17% career and technical schools, 6% the military, and 2% undecided. In addition to that, as we are digging deeper into data, one of the projects that Tiffany is working on, as well as counseling specialist, is examining intersections of privilege and intersections of different risks with our students and trying to make sure that we're providing personalized support. If you look at the American School Counselors Association model, we implemented this model beginning to, or began to implement this model with a strategic plan when Michael Doring was first over counseling in 2010. And since then, we have been able to ensure that all of our schools are implementing the national model. And that actually becoming a nationally certified counselor is more the norm than something that is different. It's expected, and our counselors are working toward that. The American School Counselors Association and the national model, we have two recognized national model schools, DePoli and Shaw. We also have closing the gaps and results reports. The counselors engage in program audits. They're able to work with data systems that we have implemented this year through Google Docs and other types of things, to put together some data that really makes sense for their administrators and for anyone who's asking about what contribution does a counselor make by being in the school. And what's great about the national model is that's what its intention is, is to say, "How is the school different?" Because counselors were present within that building. And so, we're very proud of this. A lot of counselors, at the very beginning, had resistance simply because they didn't see that what they were doing was producing a lot of data. So, a lot of it was, it was fun to show them this. And as the district has built their data programs, it's been good for them to be able to use those to apply more data to what they're doing. In addition to that, again, I'm mentioning the Career Center facilitators. One thing that we want to do next year to increase this information, what we find out often is that we go to gather data on something, and we find out not everyone's keeping data the same way, or that they're not keeping the same data. So, through Fatima and her work that she's done with our higher education, and wants, really wants to do with our Career Center facilitators, we talked about aligning that and working together, helping to identify scholarships for students across the board, and put together some supports for our schools. And we know that, again, as we continue to move forward, we'll be able to support that work. When, at the beginning of the year, we received 504 and home hospital, it's customary when you receive something to audit it. And that's precisely what we did. We spent a lot of time auditing all the files. We have 595 active and 580 inactive files. We created a new file system, and we analyzed the files that we had. And when we first started, about 2% of the 504s that were coming in were complete and accurate. We are, we then went to, at mid, 12%, and are now at 25%. We continue to need to work with the schools and the counselors to make sure that they're keeping it together. And it's very different than your IDEA or Special Education files, because often, they have a case manager that keeps those files, duplicates those files, get those things going. A 504 is something that we wanted to make sure was aligned into our infinite campus system and improve the processes. So, we look forward to with increased training and work continuing to work on that. And it makes sense because counselors often are the ones who do the 504s. And, you know, are they're a part of the team or leading the team that does the 504s. The next one is increasing training and information about cultural competencies. Well, in previous years, when we looked at cultural competency training and information, there was a real push in our district to train administrators. It's really important to have an instructional leader in a building be on board with the work that was happening. And there was other work that was going on through coaching, through IPIP credits, which are the individual in-service credits and other things like that. But, we know in order to make a difference with students, you have to get the materials to counseling. So, by collaborating not only with professional learning cafes, but connecting the dots, parent engagement workshops, putting out information that's available across the board, we've been able to increase that. So, at last count, it was 1,057 who have been able to participate, with over 90% of those being teachers. We're examining, you know, through the in-service system to ensure there's not a lot of duplications, because sometimes people who are really interested in this are also always really interested in this. And next year, one of the things that's been really exciting is that as multi-tiered systems of support and social emotional learning move forward, we will be able to collaborate with them and equity and diversity, and really have some departments partnering to reach even more teachers. And so, that will impact, impact the support of kids. And we hope to be able to put together some KPIs that will help show you that, so that it's not so much process data. In addition to that, you're in year three of the implementation of the Sexual Health and Responsibility Education Program. So, again, as you recall, three short years ago, some of you recall, some of you don't, three short years ago, we changed the model of delivery for the SHARE Program to an embedded program. The program had been delivered by 10 specifically trained, and I guess actually before that, 15 specifically trained SHARE teachers since 1985. And our district went to a more embedded model, so that health teachers, ROTC instructors, and at the elementary level, school counselors are teaching the SHARE Program. And Catherine Weber Karp has done a considerable amount of work to increase the training, to collaborate with ROTC, to work with PE and wellness, and to make sure that this program's in place. And this program has active parent permission. And we continue to gather all the active parent permissions for the district and retain those records. And in addition to that, audit, you know, the programming to ensure and provide, make sure that we're assisting with the materials, since only materials that are approved by you may be shown to students when we talk about sex education. When we go to our trends and accomplishments, some of these I've mentioned before, I just have to say, one of the most enjoyable components of my job, because so many of the things that I encounter are sad, or are difficult, or are heavy, whether, no matter what, really, you know, we're working on, a lot of times when I get involved, that's what it's about. The Student Advisory Board has been great fun. It's something I really look forward to. And it's something that I know that we get to partner with you on, that it is an absolute joy. So, some of the other accomplishments, and I'm not going to go through each and every one of this, is the rollout of Speak Up and other actionable tools to assist against prejudice and discrimination. Something that's really important about Speak Up is it has, it has actual things that people can do to ensure consistency when they hear prejudice across the board. And it teaches them some steps that administrators and others can, can listen to. And Tiffany and Fatima have already been asked about a lot of professional development that you mentioned before, but even just before the close of this year, a lot of Speak Up. I want to again recognize the Career Center facilitators and the counselors. The Counseling and Career Fair was, was really quite a task to put on, and it's something that's outreach. So, you know, we're working on family opportunities on a regular basis and providing information out to people. But, in partnership with the University of Nevada Reno, that first ever Career Fair and that college fair every single year have been a huge success. Next, I really want to recognize the transparency that we're trying to have across the board in counseling, because that's something that is really important, and also in equity and diversity. But, often, when you have a grant, unless you have a presentation about that specific grant, depending on the dollar amount of the grant, and a lot of our grants tend to be under those dollar amounts that wouldn't normally have a board presentation, that people wouldn't normally hear about. Gear Up being one of those, the Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Grants. We have Gear Up at both Vaughn and Trainer. And those programs will roll up with the students. And the Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Funds is something that we have been doing and partnering with as a district since their name was Bureau of Alcohol and Drug Abuse, or BETA. So, it's something that we can partner with, with Join Together Northern Nevada, is something that we can build into place for our kids. And, and all of those things, we're, we're very pleased with. The next slide, really, the, the first item, I think, is the most important one for me to mention to you. There is not a person who reports to me and us and our office that does not engage in direct service. Direct service with parents, direct service with families, direct service with students. We, all of us, see kids, talk to kids, work with parents, are active and providing supports. And it's something that we have in place that we think is very important. So, that's something that I wanted to make sure that I was able to... And this was such a very difficult year. And I will say that when I started in 1995, and I reflect back on all of the years that I have worked in our schools, you know, as a counselor, as a program coordinator, as a specialist, or as an administrator, and now coordinator, and then also as a director, this was one of the most difficult years. And so, to say that we maintain compliance and help to improve major mandates, you know, unfortunately, is what, you know, you know, as we point to all these great things that we're really proud of, you know, you can't help but wonder, okay, well, what else could we have done? But, we were very much, as a department, impacted on multiple levels, personally and So, with that, I don't know if you have questions.
Me, McClure.
When will the Equity Task Force, how far are they along in what they're doing?
Okay.
Can you tell us who's on it too, please?
Sure. And I may have Tiffany Young come and talk to you a little bit about that. Is that okay? Just to give you more details. So, it's Tiffany.
The, is it on? We're here. The Equity Task Force has had two meetings so far. We have a minimum attendance of 35 representative people across the community internally and externally. And our next meeting, the first meeting was pretty much a get-to-know everyone there who was going to be represented. Our second meeting, we were very transparent about the data and where we stand right now in the district. And for our external stakeholders, it was an opportunity for the district to own where we are, to say what's happened around disproportionality and suspension around our students and gifted and talented programs, where our, our HR staff looks at. So, we did that in that conversation. Our next step will be in our meeting next week, is to actually look at a draft of an equity policy. Also, look at where we are as a district, the mindset with... Also look at where we are as a district, the mindset with our community and connections about what our expectations and beliefs are, and then how we're going to guide, based on data, our next steps as far as making recommendations to our Board of Trustees.
Then where are we with follow-up on all the courageous conversations that occurred a couple of years ago with?
You and I have the exact same question.
Glenn Singleton? I mean, I, didn't we do all the training of the principals, leadership? And then we stopped? Did we do any, well, all right, you just answered that question.
So do you want to hear the members of the task force, some of the members? Do you want to just give some of the members?
Or you can email it.
Yeah, I can. I can email you the list. I can email you the list of the members. But I will say, what I will say in the area of professional development, because there are some remnants of some of that courageous conversation. But what I think Fatima and I can both agree on is that we have had more conversations for opportunities around professional development that have expanded on some of that work that was done. Are there pieces that probably should be picked back up and expanded upon? Yes. Have we had opportunity to go a little further in some areas? Yes. Do we need more work? Yes. And, but it has been, I would say, welcomed more around conversations for professional development in those areas.
And Tiffany, I just got to give you kudos and Fatima and Catherine because the last café that I went to, and actually my wife attended as well because this is something that's very close to her, it was all about cultural competency. And it was to see that room full of teachers, over 500 teachers, and to have the conversations about, instead of, you know, and it was very brutal conversations around judging and biases and sort of twisting, you know, and it was interesting because just the way the speaker did, and then after there was multiple sessions with the teachers themselves. I felt trustee McCurry was really, it's probably the first big effort we've made in following up the work of Singleton. But it is, you know, but I think, I mean, I got to give kudos to the staff because we're finally reaching at the teacher level. We've never done that before. And I will tell you, I mean, we're always pushing it with our principals, but if we don't do it at the teacher level, you know, not very much is going to change. So I think that's just the beginning though. We still have a ways to go, but that was a good beginning.
Can I follow up on that? So how often do you do that, do the café? And because we have, what, 4,000 teachers?
Yeah, so the café is an endeavor that we started to do this year through the Professional Learning Department. So the last café, which was held in this month, May, we actually had two previous ones. But the, what we frame it is around using MTSS and cultural responsive practices. So it was the same sort of setup in terms of breakout sessions. But one of the nice things that, one of the emphases that we have for the sessions is that we had a special education session with content embedded with cultural responsive practices. So that's what the cafés, the goal of the cafés is that you embed main content along different departments. So they all kind of share the same language and start to see the connections and to allow the teachers to see that, those connections as well. So the May one, it was mainly, as Superintendent Martinez said, on cultural responsive practices, exact, more specific about equity. So we are partnering, we continue to partner with the Professional Learning Department. And next year, we're going to have one month again dedicated to equity. But for any other Saturday cafes, we're going to have a session as well on equitable practices. They're going to be embedded throughout.
And in addition to the Saturday cafes, we also understand that we have to be strategic about reaching as many as we can because we're not a, we're not a large group of people. And so we are understanding that when we can partner collaboratively across the district with other departments and programs, we can reach a larger number of people. But it's still a challenge, but we are making progress. And so we can, we can see that we are moving forward. And just recently today, Fatima and I have been having conversations with Rick Martin in Transportation about providing some PD with his staff around Speak Up. And so we are really starting to look at, these conversations are coming, people are starting to now reach out to us and ask us to come in and how can we best meet their whole department? We're talking to Tony Rader about working with the ESP staff. And so we're really trying to figure out how we can bring the knowledge and content and skillset that we have to the largest populations and make it be impactful.
And the other thing to, you know, just, this is the first year we did the cafes. So part of it for us is we want to make sure, because even the trustees were a little skeptical. If you remember this conversation we had about the strategy. So one of the things that I'm seeing more and more is that each of these cafes is getting more and more crowded. So I mean, don't be surprised because the word is starting to get out because we don't mandate this. So we're making, but we keep track of everybody who's there because everybody has to pre-register. And what I'm seeing more and more is that I wouldn't be surprised if before we know it, we're going to be reaching, you know, well over 500, up to 1,000 in these cafes. Because there's, because one of the challenges we have with our teachers, and many of, you know, many of you know this, they are so used to the previous years of sort of things just being thrown at them and not very productive, not as helpful to them. And now what they're seeing with the way the format is being done, it's very content-rich, but also very practical in terms of practices. But it is just the beginning though, you know, because that's one of the things we talked about this, this year. A lot of things we're doing this year are foundational pieces we're building on. But what the goal is, if people see the value of them, we're going to continue to see the demand.
Well, and so, you know, some of the other processes that are taking place related to equity is looking at things such as, you know, teacher evaluation tools, you know. So some accountability and connection work as well as data, you know, announcing data. You know, we talked about the fact that a lot of people don't know exactly where the data is related to equity. So I'm sure you saw at the Data Summit, there was a real emphasis on that. So we're looking at each individual child, each practice, and then trying to work for those students to make sure that we have equity across the district and we're recognizing all of our institutionalized practices that impact that.
So I guess my question is, I'm trying to, and I'm wondering if the trustees have done a good job in, because I know this is a priority for the trustees, equity and diversity. If we are looking at it systemically enough and are we providing the support and the guidance for equity and diversity? So it is systemic, like we talk about parent engagement, family engagement. I don't know what it's called now, but you know, you know what I'm saying. And so for example, on the star ratings with the schools, should this be, should this be part of it? So I mean, I think, I'm just, and I'm, I feel like you guys are kind of on your own little island and you're having to, you know, with your fishing pole and see what you can, you know. I don't know if we have looked at this deep enough, and I'm concerned. I feel like you're kind of by yourselves and not getting enough support at the trustee level. Maybe because we're, maybe we just haven't had that conversation yet. I don't know.
Yeah, we had a last budget conversation when we added a position. But it certainly is here versus over here when you look at the percentage of the population. But it's even as, I agree with you totally. But it's, what I want to see is how are we as a district messaging? Because are you in daily communications with the Communications Department about how we even message? And it's in the, it's in the everything in which we say and which we do. And I'm not sure that we're projecting that because...
I don't think they have the support to do that.
No, I know. I'm talking to superintendent.
Oh, okay. I think these guys are busting their tail.
I know, I know they're busting their tails.
I'll respond when you're, when you're done.
But there's, there's more that we need to do that it has to be, as you say, comprehensive. And I'm not sure we're there yet in what the barriers are. But I would, education is silos. It's not anybody's here's fault. But, you know, our Communications Department, as well as our other departments, this message always needs to be out there on an ongoing basis about race, about cultural competency, about the difference in our children and what we need to do. You've been waving your hand there, trustee.
That's all right. That's okay. I'm worried about you.
I am too.
I'm worried about the staff. You always get into something that isn't fun. It isn't pleasant. Do you take care of yourselves? Because if we lose you, we've got nothing. And that's another thing that I think is very, very important in this whole thing. You know, teachers go through hell many, many times. All it takes is one kid and you're a waste. So I think you need to take care of yourselves too. Do you have meetings where you talk to one another and let it out? Because if you don't, I think, I think you need to. I really do. I worry about you.
Thank you. You know, just hearing the, I'm sorry, I'm just... The red. I just...
Okay, I'm a red too.
It's the expressive red.
It's the expressive red. So here's what I'm seeing, just in my experience in looking at the, in the district and being involved in the district for a zillion years. I feel like this department is pushed down. And I feel like it needs to be closer to the superintendent because they are involved in the core of everything that we're doing. And for some reason, there are layers and layers on top of it. I don't know why. Maybe that's how school districts function across the country. But we're depending on Catherine to ensure supports for career and college readiness with the counselors. We're depending on them for equity and diversity. And I believe it's with the right person, but I don't, I think we may have missed this in our discussions in the strategic plan, I'm not sure. But there's an awful lot falling on this person without, I don't, I'm not seeing enough support. And I'm concerned because what happens one day when we don't have Catherine? Because I think she holds this department together. And how are we building all of these programs systemically? And giving her the support she needs, giving our equity and diversity people the support they need? So all of these things are systemic. Because of the Sparks Middle School, have you lost any staff this year?
Yes, I lost an equity specialist in October who never came back. And I lost almost 100% of my counseling, equity engagement specialists. I'll be replacing all of them this year.
How many is that?
Four.
I think we have to take a look at this. I think we're so dependent on Catherine doing such an amazing job with counseling. I think we have to take a look at getting some more supports in this department. And I really believe she needs to be closer to the superintendent because I see the things that she is involved with and the dependency that the district has on her work. And I just think we're missing, I just think there's some concerns here for me. I didn't see it until, I was kind of really not paying too much of attention to the presentation because I know so much about this department. But the more you talked and the more I looked, I did not know all of this.
And I would agree with that. Just Steven Clark? I would agree with that. I think there's way too many responsibilities. And I don't know why the 504s would move over into your department. That's a special ed issue. I don't care whether a counselor sits at the table or not. Those are issues that belong there. I'm also concerned about the Equity Task Force and the fact that you've got two people running around doing this. And I think it's a good idea to talk about, maybe we need to come back again on this whole issue to talk about some restructuring stuff. I think we've probably said enough for tonight. There's a whole lot of things that need to be addressed. And Lisa, for your information, I've been thinking about this because we've got this over here, this over here, this over here, this over here, this, you know. We talk about the prevention plan. The prevention and intervention is all what we need to have fully addressed in our documents. And it almost speaks to the school improvement plan, which is now shrunk down to three goals when in fact it used to cover almost every single thing we talk about as successful schools. You don't create a successful school if you have a poor climate, blah, blah, blah. You don't create a successful school if you've got a half a dozen teachers who can't teach to the bottom quartile group of children or in that regard at the top end. So there are many things when you talk about what we need to do to prevent something happening again, at least to try and do a better job with it, that we try and meld some of these things together. And there are no negotiables in relationship to having an appropriate climate and having cultural responsiveness. There is no negotiation. This is how we are going to do business in this school district. And for little kids, for example, we're moving towards continual differentiation even though we have the Common Core standards. So it doesn't matter whether you're talking about a group of kindergartners or high school students who are divided into four or five different groups because they don't have the prerequisite skills necessary to move to the next level. So there are many, many different things. And I think that this has brought up a good conversation. If we look at the prevention piece and see all of this training all the time, there are some things that people intuitively know that they get from the university, so it shouldn't be, and we're just going to say, you're going to need to do this, this, and this. And when we get down to it, what kind of rubrics do we have on our walkthroughs in relationship to going through schools and looking for all of the indicators that are necessary for us to know that this is a, this is a healthy, safe school? So I totally agree with what she has said here this evening.
And it's also the rubrics that, that say that align with our vision and core beliefs.
Absolutely.
Trustee I A S I O C.
The one thing that this conversation made me sort of forget in the budget was I think that we at one point asked for an ORC chart of the, more of the entire district so we understand where's where. And I think it's too big to put on a piece of paper, so it was just for me online, you know. So it could be as big as we want to make it on Prezi or something. So we could look at those things and see right now, just to see how it is. And then we can talk to you about whether we want to change it or not because again, that's, that's your discussion, your decision. But I don't understand what they all are when trustee Rosario says, you're far away. I'd like to see a visual thing. Well, I don't know what that means.
Right, right. And I would say, you know, just to, first of all, the updated strategic plan, and we still have, just as you said earlier, you know, we still have to come back and you have to look at whether we still want to make more changes to it. It is very reflective of everything you're talking about. So put aside org structure, you know, put aside the management operational piece. There's always, there's always going to be tweaking to that no matter what because we're always learning every year, including myself as superintendent. But the framework, our framework, the reason we decided to deviate from the state, and we're catching some heat from the state right now for this, is because they didn't address achievement gaps. We do in our framework. The whole acceleration zone, by definition, is exactly around this issue. I mean, I mean, the changes in leadership, there is a lot of work to be done, I will tell you, around culture. There's a lot of work to be done around training of teachers. The piece that I'm not, that I'm not naive about is that these conversations that we're having right now, I would ask trustee McCurry, how long have these conversations been going? Even when you were an employee here in the district?
Well, when I came, I'm talking the same issues I was talking when I walked into the door in 1974.
So, and President Clark, how long have you been dealing with these issues?
Since the early 90s.
And the only reason I say that, just like when we talk about special ed and ELL, this is a huge culture shift for the district. What I mean, culture in terms of the way we look at things and the way we operate. And, and I agree with you, it has to be embedded in everything. But it has to be done in a way where we still respect the work, right? Because it's, there's a, you know, there's, I mean, and you know this because you're behind all these changes around. You know, you've seen the pushback we get when we change leadership and acceleration zone and you assign more resources to certain areas than others. I mean, there's, everything has, I mean, look at the pushback you got around, you know, investing in technology, especially when a lot of these schools, you know, are in the poorest areas and have no access to technology. So first of all, I applaud the board for your values, number one. I think you deserve a lot of credit because you've never deviated from that. Know though, that, and especially as we go into the new strategic plan and we get into all these details, including the equity and diversity workforce, or the committee, these are the kind of things we're going to have to tackle together. And the one thing I will tell you is that there's not going to be one, there's not going to be one easy answer because this has been going on for so long. And so part of it is, you know, we'll, let's continue to have these conversations and be strategic next year as we, as you get progress on the strategic plan around some of these key things. I mean, I mean, so I think that's one of the things that we should just work on as a team, is figuring that out so that you start getting a comfort level of the things that are happening. So that frankly, and I'll just use Glenn Singleton as an example, where we don't start something, like if something got started back in 2010, it doesn't really get picked up as much. Or if it evolves, you're not really clear how it's evolving. So that's something I would just ask you to work with me on so we figure... So that's something I would just ask you to work with me on, so we figure those things out together. And then some of the management issues, again, we're going to continue to evolve. I mean, it's going to continue to be tweaked. But I would ask that we sort of look at it from the big picture, because like I said, if we focus on, on structural things or details on org charts, and you'll, we'll get that to you no matter what. But I, I think the, the bigger piece is how do we change the culture? How do we communicate? I think you make a great point about how are we talking about things? This is, remember, you approved a couple positions in communications that specifically work with the schools, work with several most underrepresented groups. All that has to come together. So I, I, I just want to make sure we're, you know, it's not going to be one, two individuals or one department. It's going to be sort of a holistic piece. We'll have to figure out how to break down the silos. That's my job, but, but at the same time, just know that it's not, you know, and I love these individuals that are here in front of me, but it's not just them. Because frankly, it can't be them. We have 8,000 employees, you know?
Justine Rosenberg.
This is, this is very much like the university catalog. If it stays the way it is, the university dies. You're volatile, you're dynamic, there is no answer. There is a possibility today that may change tomorrow, depending upon what happens to us. So I think once we get that through our heads, that you can't solve it as such. We can make inroads on it, maybe put one part of it away and get on to the next part of it. But Catherine, you mustn't take this personally. And that's what worries me more than anything else. You do the best that you can do, but that's all you can do.
Trustee Iasi.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how to comment on this without going too far on what our job is. But I know that, I, I remember when we had, to me, it's sort of a similar issue, but not the same thing. We were having trouble retaining 911 dispatchers because of the, the trouble that they had. And we had to really look at that, about whether we wanted to do something with that position. And we found out we had to make major changes there in order to retain people.
Yeah.
And I know that these situations this year probably had nothing to do with money.
Right.
But it certainly has something to do with money when you want to bring new people in. And I certainly believe that in the position, when you lose that many, you don't want to hire people that are brand new. I think someone with, with experience coming in helps. And maybe there's a requirement that people have to take vacation time. Because I also understand the personalities are such that you get involved in these things. And that was another issue we saw with our dispatchers. They just never took any time for themselves. They didn't take the vacation time that they've been accumulating.
And, and you know, trustee Iasi, I really appreciate that. And I'm sure many of you, because I'm aware of a lot of your backgrounds, what, we definitely will hire counseling equity engagement specialists that have experience and years. And they will be hardworking. And I have already talked to Michael Doring about restructuring their work. But a lot of the crises and deaths that we responded to were, it was the timing of those. It was, you know, coming straight off the call and murder suicide, heading right into the Sparks Middle School shooting, and then going to a suicide the next two, two days after. And if there is anything else that I've learned, it's, you know, because the calls will come in, I appreciate the community so much. And through collaborating with the community, we can expand our own, you know, capacity. So as we redesign that part, I think that's important. It's hard to be the leader and then take the time off when your people are all, you know, having a hard time. And I can see why they were having a hard time. And I, although often we were shoulder to shoulder, you know, we had, we, you know, we started off the year with a death at Trainer. And we had a death at Sun Valley. We had a death at Beasley. I mean, we have 7,200 employees, maybe that's correct. You know, 63,000 kids, parents, you know, lots of different issues. And then we even have people who are well-loved in the community that come into our schools and impact our schools that we're not even counting in those numbers. You know, it's, you know, volunteers and foster grandparents and those kinds of things. And not that every single solitary, you know, crisis incident, there, we don't get called to all of them. But it's the timing of that. And it's, it's, it's very sad news. We hear sad news about kids that are missing, you know, like law enforcement does. We hear about kids that are missing. We work with people that want to kill themselves, or they have their child that does, or they have an eating disorder, or their child's pregnant, or their child's addicted and they find them downtown, you know, and, and living, you know, over by a motel. We have very sad things that we hear. So we absolutely need to, to work on that. And a lot of the, the professional development things that we have planned for counseling are, is about that renewal and regeneration. And it's also going to be very much about collaborating with our community partners who are there to help support us because we can't do everything by ourselves. And I learned, I really need to ask for help more often. And I will say that Pedro was very supportive, even through some really heated, difficult things that I was facing. And I really appreciate that. I mean, he definitely was. I mean, right, you know, at tables with really, you know, I could feel it all right here. And he was, he was very supportive and always supportive of that.
Catherine, I mean, just, just to give you one example, I still remember the, the parent who killed the kindergartner, his, his own child. We started, that was early in the year.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how our year started, you know, this year. So I mean, those are the things that just have completely, I mean, it's just been a tough year. So again, I applaud Catherine and the team because they, they're the ones that are the face and helping support all the staff with all these issues.
I think though, we've got to take care of our staff. And, and, you know, that has, that has to be a priority because of the high expectations we, we have for them. And so this is a good conversation, this is, this is a good conversation, and this is no way reflection of the great work you all have done. I mean, we are so grateful. And, but I do worry when someday we don't have Catherine. You know, she's getting up there, I'm just kidding.
I'll hold her while you come over and hit her.
But I, I, I really do. And so I want to make sure our processes are systemic. I worry when we don't have Kristen. You know, so I'm seeing a pattern here where a key people are taking on a lot, you know, we're, we're putting a lot on them, but we need to be mindful of that because Kristen's getting up there too. No, I'm just kidding. We need...
We'll do a journey before you...
Can you save us, please?
But, but we do need to say, you know, thank you to Catherine. Because we were there physically for that first week, which was just horrible. And then everything that we kept saying, you know, you need to put this on and you need to do something in this evening, and, and you guys stepped up to the plate each and every time. It was very difficult.
Always.
However, back to the premises is that we need to keep looking at this because this is counseling, diversity are, are part of our vision and our belief systems. And, you know, these conversations help us to look at the next thing that comes before and try to improve. And that's what we want to do, is keep improving because it's, it's critical. If we want to be a great school district, we need to have our children and our staff and our families all feel equally valued. And, you know, it takes a lot of work, but we can do it. I think we can, but we got...
So, so what did we talk about? Are we going to ask them to come back? Are we, what, what are the next steps here?
My, my advice would be that we do it all through the updated strategic plan so that everything has worked. Because keep in mind, you got a safety commission that's going to be looking at multiple issues around culture, because that's part of safety. We have new metrics that are coming online. I also think, you know, even from the survey results, I may give you advice that we do a draft document and then we, we send that out to get more input. Because that way, some people have more things to look at, a little more information. You would see it first, of course. But that way, and then we just continue to work on it. But I, I, my advice would be we do it through, through that lens. Because otherwise, like I said, you're going to run the danger of looking at one thing in isolation.
Right.
And I, I would like you to look at all of the things because they're all connected. But, but, but your points are well taken about structure and looking at, making sure we're not overworking our staff. I, I hear you guys, so thank you for that input.
And I believe superintendent Martinez that we are seeing that how much the, these programs impact student achievement, and it needs to be close to you. That I want, that...
I hear you.
Okay.
And I just want to request that as we build those documents and resources, that we have this task force in place and that we utilize them as that voice and be able to come back and ask for recommendations. Because they understand that they have been tasked with that role. And so when we have such a large cross-section of the community, that is going to be their purpose. And I understand that they are an ongoing standing committee, not just for the purpose of one program.
I think it'd be nice to, for the board to meet with that task force at some point.
Have to find a room big enough.
Especially with those recommendations.
Outstanding.
Yeah. Because I, you know, it'd be nice to, to hear.
What day is your meeting next week?
And, yes, would you?
Wednesday, I'll send it to Terry if you like.
Can you send us the meeting notices? And do you guys do minutes?
Yes.
Can you send us the minutes?
Yes.
I don't know if everybody wants it.
Great job, Catherine, as usual.
Thanks, you guys.
You never disappoint.
To all of you, thank you. Good job. Okay, we have...
Sorry, I made you cry, Catherine.
We have, um, board members' requests, future agenda items. Trustee Iasi.
I have two things to talk about. I'd like to, I don't know, maybe it's already on, but let's bring back the strategic plan and the process is going to happen, and maybe we might want to adjust that.
Yep.
And another, I'd like to bring back the possibility of getting appraisal done on our property at Incline Village.
We're getting that already.
Okay.
So we can, we'll bring you that. So as soon as we get the results, we're going to, we'll bring that to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other agenda items?
Yes. I'd like to ask for an agenda item where Mr. Appolito and Ms. Tisaki can come, make a presentation to the board, and then we can have a discussion with them so that they under, they understand our feelings and we understand theirs. Not enough information. I'm not sure what everyone is thinking about, and I need to know that.
A presentation for the strategic?
No.
What do you want a presentation?
No. On Common Core. On Common Core.
Gotcha. And you realize it's a state mandate?
Yes, I do. But I also understand that there are other parts of the, of this whole situation that we have not discussed, and we need to. It's not going to go away. No one wants to do away with anything. But I want to know what the cons are in people's minds. And I can't do that when they have three minutes to talk at me.
Mr. Appolito has it on his website.
Yes, he does. I understand that.
Any other agenda requests? Okay, public comment, Mr. Appolito.
After, Madam President, Superintendent Martinez, honorable board members, after that last presentation, it kind of puts everything in perspective. This doesn't seem so important. We enjoy that opportunity, trustee Rosen...
Berg.
Berg, thank you. I did a 30-minute presentation at the Legislative Committee on Education last month, and trustee McClure sat through an older one, which was similar, but there's a lot of new information a couple months ago. And thank you for coming. Appreciate that. So if you, if the board decides, I would be glad to do a presentation. One of the things that just came up, most people don't know this, the, the father of Common Core, David Coleman, is now the president of the College Board. Back in March, David Coleman announced that the SAT will be dumbed down. Now, those aren't the words he used, but the words he, what he said was, the essay will become optional on the SAT. This is in 2016. The math will cover more basic topics, the vocabulary words will become easier, and there'll be no penalty for wrong answers. The SAT was dummed down, and that was specifically to align with Common Core. The summary that I have, the very brief summary, is we have a one-size-fits-all program for the whole United States now, 44 states. It's a top-down control of education. It's not written by K-12 teachers or qualified people. There's little, if any, local control over the standards. It's rushed by the federal government. It's written in secret meetings. The people involved had to sign confidentiality agreements. The people that objected, their objections were never published. The Common Core is not research-based. It's never been tested. There's many experts that say the standards are inappropriate. The curriculum and tests line up to inappropriate standards. All states, Common Core states, are teaching to one or two tests. We have to accept the standards 100% as written. We can't revise them. This is not a starting point. It's very expensive to implement. We have to wait 10 years to see if it's going to work. That's what you're getting with Common Core. One of the local superintendents in the state of Nevada said he is not going to require his students in his district to take the Common Core tests. To me, the most insidious thing about Common Core is the data collecting, storage, and sharing. And once the SBAC or PARK or whatever Common Core tests we go with in this state, once the students take that test, that's when their data gets beyond the state. I implore you to figure out a way, figure out something for next year where I don't have to keep my daughter out of school for three weeks to avoid the Common Core test. I just kept her out of school for four days to avoid the test this year. Next year, it's going to be much harder. Unfortunately, superintendent of public instruction has kind of taken a hard line on this. I think it's up to the superintendents to put their foot down and protect the children. We don't know the implications of having all this data out there yet. I think it's up to you guys and the superintendents. Thank you very much for your time.
So let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What are you asking the Washoe County School District to do?
Figure out...
It is a mandate, and we don't get the money associated, don't get the federal money unless we do it. So I'm, I'm just not clear, Mr. Appolito, what is it you want the Washoe County School District to do?
Figure out a way where we can somehow not take the Common Core tests. I, my daughter...
It's a law. I, I know, but I, but I keep, I keep asking the question. I just, Mr. Appolito, for everything, and you can email me this, I don't understand what you want us to do, other than you want us to say, as a district, we will not obey the state laws. Is that what you're asking?
It would, would help me personally, since there's nobody here anymore, if you don't put pressure on the, the principal at my daughter's school. Because when they take the test, if she's not there when they take the test, then on the makeup day, if she comes back to school, she could be missing school for three or four weeks. If you don't put pressure on the principal, she's not going to require it. It's up to you guys.
So the state does have opt-out procedures for testing, so we'll make sure that Mr. Appolito knows that.